Do you use Slack Week or today? So, general plan amendment this morning?
That's today.
Uh, this week?
That's today.
And then this one?
That's today.
Yeah.
We forget.
You guys are not taking it.
Yeah, I'm gonna break it off.
Test. Test. Can you hear me, Alicia? Test, 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 test. Test, Alicia, test.
Good morning. Eric, I have a question. My email, it doesn't show who sent it.
So what we'll do is we come up here, we right-click, and we say, "Who's it from?"
Okay, great. Great, I appreciate that. Otherwise, I don't read it. If I don't recognize it, I don't read it.
The off-shit.
Pardon me? I know.
I haven't opened it this morning. Nothing.
Thank you, sir.
I can see now.
I'm a Sunday night.
He really hates that.
Didn't mark my maps in here. I usually, well, I usually pull pages over. This time, I just ripped through it.
Tore it up.
Still have time, I'll turn on my watch. I'm ready, ready to rock.
Good morning. Please join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence. Quits.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna start this morning with item one. Proclamation declaring April 2007 as National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Bev Anderson, I'm the president of the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council. This is Karen Cooper. I want to thank you for this proclamation. This is a very important event for us. This is a sort of the collaboration of many years of efforts to fight child abuse in Tulare County. Every year, we have over eighty thousand reports of child abuse and neglect in the Central Valley. And we have joined a group of nonprofit agencies, as well as the county of Tulare, and really making a dent in prevention efforts. And so, we'd like to give you some information. We'd also like to give some symbols of child abuse prevention and help you personalize that to the children in this community who are hurting, and so very much appreciative of all your efforts. Thank you.
Hi, as Bev said, I'm Karen Cooper. I'm the treasurer of the Child Abuse Council, and about so kind of the ancient mariner of the Child Abuse Council, because I've been on it since, I think, nineteen seventy-eight or something. But what that tells you is that it has been here a long time, and actually, this is your Child Abuse Council, because some of the things we do are done by your authorization, and others are done by legislative authorization. So there's a Child Abuse Council in every district, every county in California. And part of our responsibility is to coordinate and to work together and to build cooperation in dealing with issues related to child abuse. So we are very lucky to be in Tulare County, where we have a lot of cooperation, a lot of people that speak to each other. We have meetings at some, we moved to Porterville, we moved to Tulare, we have members come from all over the county. And that's something that a lot of counties find really something to strive for, because they're not able to do that. Also, we have a good relationship with the Board of Supervisors, and especially in the most recent times, we suddenly have a marvelous relationship with Health and Human Services Agency. So we're very happy with what we're achieving there, in the sense of cooperation and collaboration. So again, thank you. We, again, as Bev said, there are, you know, unfortunately, a very high number of children. And both Bev and I are also practitioners, so we see children who are abused, molested, neglected, and physically abused, and especially children who witness violence. And I think that one of the things that I would want to leave you with, when you think about it in a personal way, is that child abuse is not just, you know, a personal act of violence toward a child, but it's also the environment that's created for a child. And we have way too many homes in our county where every day, children see violence in their home, violence in their neighborhood, sometimes even in their school site. And this really is a huge issue for the growth and development of children. So that's why it's something that we all work together with law enforcement, with the Health Department, with our elected officials. It's really a community response effort, so thank you again. And Bev's gonna give you presents.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you with this proclamation declaring April National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Tulare County. We are very thankful for the job that you do. We believe that we should be full partners in helping with this problem. And I know you have a lot of community support, and we are taking measures to even involve the county a little bit more on first, second, and third graders. So, thank you very much for the dedication.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna move to, I guess we go to the consent calendar, we have time. Are there any items the board members wish to discuss separately?
If there's not, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent calendar items five through sixteen.
Second? Please cast your vote. Vote is unanimous, approval, consent calendar. We're a little bit quicker than normal.
Take public comment.
Okay, we can take public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to address the board on subjects under our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda? Well, that took up thirty seconds.
You do have items not timed as well.
I think we're ahead of the folks for that, aren't we?
Item seventeen?
Well, we can, yes, let's go to item seventeen. This is a resolution from the board to propose that language to HR twenty-four, House Representatives, water settlement bill.
Good morning, Jeff Forbes, Board of Supervisors Office. Supervisor Oshida said, this is, it's item seventeen, is requesting ways to mitigate the, force mitigation for the San Joaquin River settlement. As you know, there was no mitigation measures that came out of the San Joaquin River settlement. They weren't mandated in there. Your board adopted a resolution in January urging Congress to put some mitigation measures in the two bills, they're companion bills, HR twenty-four and S twenty-seven. So this is a way to look at mitigation, how to get that in there, because of the great concern of losing water for the municipal users, as well as agricultural users. One important point is that by adopting this resolution, your board is not in any way opposing the settlement. The settlement is done. This is addressing the legislation that will implement the San Joaquin River settlement. And for further comments, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Oshida.
I think at this time, we have the Friant Water Authority here, and Ron, if you'd like to make a comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Could you please state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Ron Jacobs, I'm the general manager for Friant Water Users Authority. And obviously, the Friant Water Users Authority has been involved in this litigation since its inception in nineteen eighty-eight. It's been a long, expensive, arduous process. It's been frustrating in many instances. By way of a quick recap, it's been in the federal court in Sacramento. It has had many facets to the legislation, or to the litigation. And repeatedly, as we've gone through the federal court system, we've had rulings against us, even though we believe our court case was strong, we believe the state and the federal governments had made clear how the Friant Division would be operated. But efficient game code ultimately became the particular item in the judge's view that tripped us up. And about two and a half years ago, the judge ruled against the federal government in that regard, stating that releases had to be made to support the historic fishery, which was salmon in this case. So we were, in preparation for trial, a number of expert reports were put together as part of discovery that talked about what fish flows might be required under a judge's settlement, and what, or judge's ruling, and what fish flows plaintiffs actually came up with, which were much lower than what we had anticipated. As a result of those flows, we turned that into water supply impacts and economic impacts, primarily focusing on the agricultural sector, because that's what the Water Authority primarily serves. And what we came to realize is that the impacts were half of what we hadn't expected. So we believed we had something that was manageable. We know that your board is supportive of the settlement, and we really appreciate that. We also realized that there's an ongoing concern in Tulare County and the entire Friant Service area on how we get this water back. One of the things that we were able to include as part of the settlement is some levels of mitigation. We have two equal goals in the settlement. We have very specific things we plan on doing on the river in order to have a goal to restore the fishery, and that's important, because for twenty years, we have fixed flow regimes. But twenty years hence, we will have this item definitely revisited, and if the fishery's not successful, we face additional risk at that time. We don't want to be there, so we want to make sure that the fishery goals are implemented. Equally important is the water management goal, particularly to our area. That's where our focus will be. In it, we have some very defined tools, such as a recovered water account that allows, in wet conditions, water to be made available at a discounted basis, which we think will stimulate groundwater programs that, right now, may not be economically viable. In addition, once we had executed the settlement agreement, the Secretary of the Interior was directed to plan and implement a plan of recirculation, reuse, and recapture. What that is specifically, we don't know. We intentionally left that vague. We have a number of options for potential local programs, regional programs, and what we call kind of universal programs, that will need to be explored so we can pursue the most bang-for-all-buck on getting our water back. That brings us to the item of the suggested amendment to HR twenty-four. As you know, when we were going through these negotiations with third parties, and I know that the folks outside of the Friant Division feel like they were third parties and perhaps not represented during those discussions, but we did sign an agreement with Senator Feinstein's direction in leading us through those negotiations, that no further amendments would be made to the legislation unless all the parties agree. So in light of the concerns raised by Congressman Nunes as to the water supply impacts of the settlement, and the issues that particularly the chairman has offered in his testimony and in a number of discussions that we have had along these lines, we've taken the unusual step now of arranging a meeting with the settling parties tomorrow, to talk about what some of these concepts are that are being circulated, what the concerns are, and to explore further if there's any changes that we could have mutually agreed upon by the settling parties and then the third parties, if we did get concurrence, to advance the concepts, and then present those to Senator Feinstein, who's the author on the Senate side, and to Congressman Radonovich, who's the author of the bill on the House side. One of the issues in the resolution is it states a particular type of facility on the Lower San Joaquin River, above Vernalis, for recirculation. Initially, we also thought that that could be the most viable solution. What we do need to explore, though, is whether water quality issues, fishery issues, will impact the ability of that type of facility to get the types of quantity of water back that we need. Quite frankly, that water could be too salty, or there could be fishery concerns, and we may end up mandating that a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar facility be built that may, in fact, not provide as much yield and recovery of water that alternative solutions may be able to generate. And so, with respect to a specific solution at this point in time, while we would love to be able to point to a project or a group of projects, we're just not there yet. I am pleased to announce, though, that state and federal agencies are well on their way into taking a look at a number of the viable options, and we will keep the pressure on them, we'll ask Congress to keep the pressure on them, to make sure that the water management goal is equal to the restoration goal, and if the funds provided under the settlement are equally available to the water management goal as they are to the restoration goal. So as you go through your deliberations, again, we certainly respect and appreciate your concern on this issue with respect to the water supply. I did want to give some background on how we arrived, very briefly, on where we're at today, what the authority's position is relative to the agreements that we signed on the current legislation, and would be happy to answer any questions or address any issues that you may have.
I noticed in the proposed language that it's somewhat ambiguous, because it authorized and directs the secretary to conduct feasibility studies for, and this is "and" to construct. It would seem that you would do the feasibility studies to determine whether or not it made sense to construct, which I think is what you're saying, it may not make sense to do that. Sounds like, as you have presented the settlement agreement, this concept is included within the scope of the agreement, the idea of recirculation.
It certainly is. I think a lot of folks initially thought recirculation would just involve trying to pick water up out of the delta. We're very familiar with the challenges of additional pumping in the delta, at least in its current state, as evidenced by the state pumps being recently threatened with being shut down. So as part of the effort we did in our previous settlement attempt, is we identified numerous potential water projects that could be explored. One of them, for instance, is a pumping plant off the Lower San Joaquin River in an area around Patterson, so we just gave it the name, the Patterson Pumping Plant. The size of that, if it were connected to the Delta-Mendota Canal to bring water back around, or extend on to the state aqueduct, that, those are one of the, certainly one of the features that we would want to explore. We also have transfer and exchange programs that, as the water moves down, we can enter into other agreements and arrangements that may involve less plumbing, more efficient movement of the water, trades back and forth east side to west side using existing pumping capacity of state and federal contractors. All of those kind of things fit in the mix. Part of our testimony that Dan Dooley provided to Congress listed a report that showed local, regional, and then more universal type of projects, including a potential trans-valley canal to bring water back around if we can pick it back up in the delta off the Lower San Joaquin River, expansion of the cross-valley canal in the lower end of the valley, again, to facilitate an exchange so that we can move the water back in. And quite frankly, during discussions, certain things were off the table with the plaintiffs. We'd have loved to tie temperance flat to developing the water supplies first to support the fishery. We would have loved to have implemented specific programs that, as they developed water, that's what would be contributed. But that was not to be. It wasn't that there wasn't an attempt made, it was this delicate balance. Some folks might think that the plaintiffs had the upper hand, given the court ruling, and certainly, within the federal court, we knew that we had our challenges there. So what we were trying to find, again, is this delicate balance on a manageable water supply, and opportunities and tools to get it back, and we believe that the settlement agreement provides for some of those. But to the extent that there's not as, what I've heard, as much teeth in that agreement, or certainty with respect to the commitment to pursue those lines, that'll be some of the nature of the discussions that we will have with the settling parties tomorrow.
Would it, if I might follow up on my question, would it be, in your mind, advisable to indicate that the secretary's authorized, directed to conduct feasibility studies for, and if feasible, to construct, something of that nature, so that there's a tie-in? I mean, you have to do these feasible studies, and then, based upon those, if it makes sense, then you would proceed to authorize construction, as opposed to, right now, it just sounds like the feasibility studies are just window dressing, and because you're instructing the secretary to construct. So I think that the intent, perhaps, is not to be that, but that's the way it's worded right now. Was there some concern about the language?
Well, I think it comes across that way, and I guess there's two issues there. One, we believe that the settlement and the legislation implementing the settlement already provides the authority for the federal government to construct those type of facilities. So to the extent that there's concern as to any ambiguity in that language, certainly would be understandable for the county to want to address those concerns. The other aspect is the way the federal government typically, in Congress, reviews construction of facilities. They take a look at alternatives, and then they do the feasibility studies, and they get a preferred alternative. In this case, they may have many preferred alternatives, or combination thereof, and then they make a decision as to what is the best, you know, bang-for-the-buck, so to speak. In this case, what can get us the most water back, and timing is will be important as well, but for the least amount of money. So I guess to the extent that there's concern whether the authority exists to actually construct a facility, we believe it does, but if that's an issue for the county that they would like to have greater clarity or certainty on, that would certainly be understandable from our perspective.
I think the reason the facility was named, well, the reason the facility was named and to construct, is that we really want some concrete mitigation efforts, not feasibility studies that do not go anywhere. So, which is quite common in a lot of these projects, to do feasibility studies, but nothing really comes of feasibility. Probably more as an example than it is of something that's in concrete. I think Ron pointed out a very important part of the settlement is that the NRDC, Friant Water Users, and the federal government all have to agree before this becomes language into a bill. What this does do is point out very specifically that we want concrete mitigation efforts, and this project is just a concrete, pointing toward a concrete mitigation effort.
And one of the reasons we did provide that set of examples of programs that we believe are covered under settlement is to affirm the fact that the groundwater programs that take advantage of the recovered water account, these facilities that could be constructed to recirculate and recapture, that those are embodied in the language and the spirit of the settlement. And that we wanted to have those things submitted, so that if somebody, you know, they need to kind of speak now, if somebody looks at a project and says, "No, that's outside the settlement," we believe all those types of projects are within settlement, and we will work with the federal and state governments to ensure that those are pursued, and that the best projects are then planned, the feasibility studies done, NEPA-SEQA's conducted, and that they're actually implemented, and that the funding that's available for the river restoration program will also be available for the water management programs.
Mr. Chairman, might I just, in terms of discussion, I certainly appreciate, we all need to recognize, of course, our resolution does not make us a part of the action, and it's only words of encouragement to our legislative folks in Washington, D.C. And they're certainly free to accept or reject our resolution. I know the county has gone on record, and our chairman has made numerous trips back to Washington, D.C., to deal very specifically with one issue, and that is to mitigate the loss to our communities. They are not, they were not part of the settlement agreement insofar as the cities and incorporated communities who have contracts to access the water. And so that was our specific goal as elected officials. And I understand, and this is really just an example of the kind of concrete expectation we're hoping to build into the, whatever litigation or legislation comes out of that. So I guess it's not that I, I think it's implicit in this that you don't just construct them if the feasibility study comes back and it says, "It's not feasible." However, that's how it's worded right now, so I mean, maybe that language ought to be somewhat tempered with the idea that feasibility studies warrant, then we would authorize construction. And then we might want to even have further caveats, that we're only saying this is an example of what we're looking for, because we don't want to limit ourselves to this. If there are other means of mitigation, we wouldn't want this to be put in there, and then something else pops to the fore and says, "This makes more sense economically, it's a bigger bang-for-the-buck, and because we insist upon this particular language, we cut ourselves off from something else." So that's my only comments. I think, again, our goal here is to share in Washington with our elected officials the concerns raised by the county, and... the concerns raised by the county, and they may not be able to utilize this. As you say, we have, there has to be agreement between the parties, as to any language that's here, but we don't want to limit ourselves, we just use this as an example, I believe.
That would seem to be a very good approach, in my mind, and I really want to commend the county and particular Supervisor Ashida on, a lot of times we're getting this fish versus farms type of issues, and it doesn't become a people issue, and people don't understand Southern San Joaquin Valley, because we're not L.A., we're not San Francisco, and they don't understand that we have this common groundwater aquifer, and that our economy, the farming in the communities is so interrelated, our water supplies are so interrelated, in highlighting this issue that it has an impact more than just a farmer's irrigation for that season, the groundwater impacts that are spread throughout the communities affect small and large communities alike. And I think highlighting that issue will continue to keep the pressure and the focus equally on the water management goal, and I would encourage you to continue to monitor, work with us in realizing successful implementation of the water management goals as we move forward. Thank you.
You know, probably everybody else knows this, and maybe I know it and I just forgot it, and I'm really not trying to get off the subject, but restoring these salmon fisheries, I mean, is that anybody's reality?
Well, I'm an accountant-
I expect you to defend that.
I'm an accountant, I'm a manager of the water district, so I don't know how I went from accountant to engineer, and now I'm supposed to be a pseudo-biologist. We've really relied upon the experts from the plaintiffs who said with the river fixes that there's likelihood, a strong likelihood, that salmon populations will return. Will they number in the hundreds of thousands like they did pre-settlement days? No. What will the number be? We don't know. There could be, there could be thousands, there may be tens of thousands, there may be hundreds. We've got a lot of work to do on the river, full flows don't start until 2014, which is good, because we've got time to get water management goals in place, and it takes a couple of life cycles to even determine whether it's successful or not. And that's why the agreement was extended for 2026, so that we could see, after we make these improvements, we start to release the water, get a couple of life cycles in, is the program working or not? And our hopes are that the water management goals are fully in place, we have our water supplies back, the fishery goals, there's a successful fishery, or what's viewed as a successful fishery under today's circumstances, and we can continue on to perpetuity. Outside of the settlement, we'll continue to develop water management and water supply tools for our area. We know we're experiencing challenges with overdraft as it currently exists outside of settlement. So, you know, things like construction of a Temperance Flat, or better management, integration of systems north, south, with the tributaries, east and west, those are things that we'll continue to pursue, because we know that this county, where I live, and our region have these, have these needs. But with respect to the fisheries, their experts believe it can be accomplished, and so that's the path we'll be pursuing.
Okay. You did just as good as any biologist I've talked about.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just let me chime in a little bit on that. As one who used to work in the former timber industry, which used to flourish in this community, my concern is, from a rather cynical view, that in dealing with the environmental community, they are sometimes content to take a bite of the pie today, but they'll be back tomorrow. And so in the event that these, the fisheries do not reestablish themselves despite the best efforts made, then I would expect them to come back and say, I guess we were wrong, and I guess 200,000 acre feet isn't going to do it, and so we need to have, we need to double that, or whatever the case might be. And then when we have place to look, again, we'll be back at the agricultural industry and the existing users of that water, which has been 100% appropriated. And so that, I don't know if I'll live long enough to see that, but that would be a concern I would have, is that that's been the modus operandi, in my view, of the environmental community, and there's never really an end game in sight until they have it all, so it's pretty difficult to deal with that. But I can certainly appreciate the position that the Friant users have been in for these number of years, and the cost they've incurred and so forth, and how they had to come to the table. I would submit, Mr. Chairman, that perhaps we might want to modify our language to read something along the lines as follows. Secretary is authorized and directed to conduct feasibility studies for, and if warned and advised, said studies to construct new pumping conveyance facilities on the mainstream of the San Joaquin River above the town of Bernalis, required to implement the recirculation, recapture, reuse, and elements of the water management goal of the settlement, comma, or other improvements as such feasibility studies may warrant, so that we're not limiting ourselves to this particular project.
This language was specifically crafted in the way it was by several water attorneys, and there may be meanings in there that do not surface immediately to, to me as an untrained attorney. But this was specifically crafted in the way it was.
I'll just respond as an untrained attorney that, that what I have said, I think, is implicit in the first part, which is you conduct feasibility studies, and then you're not going to, if the feasibility studies come back and they don't warrant it, you're not going to get construction, this is not going to happen. So I think that just as a clarification. And my other language in there is to, so we don't limit ourselves.
Well, let me, let me say specifically, I didn't mean you're an untrained-
No, I didn't.
I'm the untrained.
I didn't mean that, I didn't think you meant that. What I'm saying is, I don't see what I have suggested as in any way going to take away from the language here, and in fact, I hope it makes it better, because I don't want to limit ourselves. If it turns out there are other projects which make more sense than this one, I wouldn't want to limit ourselves to this particular project.
Any other comments?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just respond briefly to Supervisor Worthley's comment on coming back by the environmentalists. I'm in a stage in my career that 20 years from now, if the board will have me, I'll still be working here, so I'm looking at having to deal with this 20 years. And one of the things that is set up, just for clarification, at the 20-year period, we haven't, we haven't given up on, everybody's preserved their position relative to the lawsuit. So nobody's conceded any of the points, the arguments that they have made. What we've done is settled, so we don't pursue those arguments through the federal court. In 20 years from now, if there's a determination that things aren't working, there's a process that's prescribed. The judge needs to refer to the State Water Resources Control Board, who needs to take into account certain criteria, again, things that have been done, how much water, and the economic impacts associated with additional water, which is outlined in the state's constitution in Article 10. So all those same arguments that have been advanced, to some extent, are many of those arguments, as to whether additional water relative to success of the future fishery and the impacts will be part of the equation 20 years from now. So I think that gives us some comfort, that it just won't be another opportunity to take another bite out of the apple and just slowly erode our water supplies, you know, every 20 years, taking 10 or 20% of our water supplies. So that was one of the things we were also able to successfully negotiate into the agreement. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, so you're still a young man, in 20 years, you'll still be here, what about everybody else?
Well, we're not certain judges retired.
The other parties, I mean, that's half kidding and it's half serious. I mean, because, you know, it's people's memory, and it's he said, she said. I mean, if you're still part of the negotiation, what about the other parties?
Well, I think that's why it's appropriate to try and memorialize as many of these items as you can, both in the settlement document, which has now been agreed upon, and the authorizing legislation. We think we have that all embodied in there, but to the extent that there's greater certainty that it's felt is necessary, we can certainly appreciate those concerns.
I think what Supervisor Conway is alluding to also matters, what judge you picked to look over the wording of the settlement.
What judge you picked.
Hopefully, we're all here in 20 years, since I'm older than Supervisor Worthley and Conway.
Ann Cox.
Ann Cox. Sorry.
Okay, I'm the oldest one of the bunch, I'll have to admit that.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak to this subject, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is James Green, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Visalia Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to come by and commend you for this resolution. You know, as a Chamber of Commerce, we look after the economic well-being of business in not only the city, but at the regional level. And we feel, as a Chamber, that it's imperative that there be concrete, concrete language in this settlement legislation, or implementation legislation, that provides for mitigation, and we just wanted to express our support. The bottom line is, we do need water in order to continue our economic vitality, and without concrete language for mitigation, it always lends a fear that we're not going to have a seat at the table when we need to look at our water supply, not only the quantity, but the quality. So we, as a Chamber, we're going to be drafting letters today to our representatives up in Washington, D.C., and I will forward your Board of Supervisors' copy of those letters also. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I bring it back to the board?
If I may, Supervisor, or Mr. Chair, I understand Supervisor Worthley's wording, although I look at this and I think this makes a, I don't know if we're trying to make a statement, I mean, this sounds like a more firm statement, but it's language that could be added into a bill as well, so I understand where Supervisor Worthley is coming at, but from a statement point of view, I think it makes a stronger statement, the way it's written, and who knows what it'll look like if and when it ever gets added into the language. But I don't mind the way it's written now, just because I think it makes a little bit of a stronger statement, and by making everything plural, studies, facilities, it opens up the options for several possibilities, I believe, instead of just one.
I have no real objection to what comments by Mr. Cox, and I think that, I think it's implicit in the first part, it's just kind of strange the way it's worded. The fact of the matter is, authorization without appropriation is zero. And so the feasibility studies will determine whether or not it's feasible economically, which would be the only, only basis upon which you're going to get appropriation dollars to do something, so you can authorize construction, but if there's no money attached to it, it isn't going to happen. I think I feel a little more strongly about the last part of what I said, which is that adding language, or other such improvements as feasibility studies warrant. If you look at the first part of it, it talks about conducting feasibility studies, and I go back to the idea, you know, this board went on record of seeking mitigation for a specific purpose. We did not determine how that mitigation would be done. When we move into this arena, now we're starting to say, this is how we think mitigation has to be conducted, and my concern is that we may leave ourselves out of other feasible mitigation measures. And that was my concern about adding the language, or other improvements as such feasibility studies may warrant, because there may be other things which give us more bang for the buck. And these kinds of facilities we're thinking of will be very, very expensive. There may be lesser expensive things that could be done that will still help us out. And so I think adding other language, it just goes to the idea that we're saying, this is a concept, we're not wedded to this concept, we are wedded to a concept of concrete mitigation measures, but what we want to make sure is that we don't expect you, government, to go off and spend lots and lots of money for very little return on the investment when there are other vehicles that might be there.
Well, as a Friant water user, I think we're spending a whole lot of money on something that may not be feasible to start with. So I have, I get defensive sometimes when we talk about this whole settlement. But I see your point, and I think we lobbied this in Washington, D.C., that we are not sure exactly what mitigation efforts will be successful, and we also, I also personally believe that there is going to be a combination of mitigation efforts. I would say the only amendment that I would feel comfortable would be to end other mitigation projects, or I would leave it specific to this one, and add "and" other, because we know, one mitigation construction project is not going to mitigate the whole loss of the surface water. So I would leave it intact, except for "and" other mitigating.
I agree with that counsel.
I think because of our efforts in Washington, D.C., lobbying, is that we've turned the settlement into what the real issues are for the most amount of people. This is a people issue, it is not a farmer versus environmentalist issue. And because of the political clout that the farming community has now, which is very little, because of the numbers of votes that we represent, this broadens the impact. And I'm not sure a lot of people saw that impact before, when Supervisor Worthley and I went to Washington, D.C., to talk about the impacts on probably at least a million people, not six or 7,000 farmers, it's at least a million people in the Friant service area.
And growing daily.
Growing daily. So I think we've met our objective, but we need to keep the spotlight on the issue, the impact of what it has on our residents, or otherwise, it's just going to be forgotten. It's going to be, settle this, now let's go on to other business. Well, this settlement in the legislation isn't going to settle all the issues that the settlement will, the settlement will bring adverse impacts to all the people in the Friant service district, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I might follow up on what you, your lead there, I think then the idea would be to add a Section C, that would also authorize the secretary to conduct feasibility studies and to construct improvements as those feasibility studies determine other projects, something of that nature. And then that way, we'd leave this language intact, but we add that other provision on there, so that we're not just limiting ourselves to this particular mitigation measure.
Well, I think we need to formalize the language.
Maybe speak a little slower when it comes to the actual-
I'm the unlearned one, if you would exist me in just saying, Item C.
We're stating what? Authorized secretary to establish feasibility. I didn't get your rest.
Let me try here.
We're writing here.
Well, the lawyers are writing.
Yeah, let the two lawyers write, because... While we're waiting for the words, this is another reason we reactivated the Tulare County Water Commission, is we are, as a county, are going to have to address the water, how much water we have, and the quality of water, because that is going to impact the growth, the future growth of our county.
It just didn't matter.
If I could seek a question from you, Chairman, while Supervisor Worthley is writing that. Had you also planned to add language to Section A for "and" other mitigating projects? Was that part of this proposal, or is that going to be subsummed into C?
I think if you add C... Or you replace it under, yeah, I think if you add C, then take care of it.
I would suggest something of this nature. See, the secretary is further authorized to conduct such other feasibility studies as necessary to mitigate the impact of the, quote, settlement agreement, and that probably is referenced someplace else, on the domestic water users of the Friant Division, something of that nature. So we're talking about domestic, we're looking at domestic water uses as opposed to farming water uses, and so we're giving broad authority then to investigate, conduct feasibility studies, and then end an authorization to construct.
If I could just raise a question, when you say domestic water users, I would look to counsel on this, but how does that affect private water delivery companies versus public entities?
Domestic is broader. Domestic is a higher use of water, it's above such things as irrigation.
Okay.
So it's for, when people need water to take a shower, when you need water to drink, potable water supplies, those are domestic uses, and that's the, that is the, quote, quote, immediate interest that the county has had in this settlement agreement, is to deal with those communities that rely on domestic uses.
I'm often accused of practicing law without a license also, so bear with me. And I know the, the lawyers do wanna look at this, but within the Friant Division, there's contracts for domestic, uh, for specific purposes within the contracts, and I, and I believe what the board is interested in here are that the regional impacts within the Friant service area. For instance, the city of Isalia doesn't have a, a long-term contract, but it may experience certain groundwater impacts, the city of Exeter doesn't. The unincorporated communities don't have specific projects, so if you, if, one of the concerns may be that if you reference domestic water for Friant water users, you're limiting yourselves to the city of Lindsay and Orange Cove and the city of Fresno, who are cities that have MNI contracts with the Bureau of Reclamation. So I would, I would just suggest that to the extent you wanna have a broader, um, coverage with respect to addressing your concerns, you may wanna take a regional approach.
I, I think the point you will take, and I have no problem with that, you're exactly right, the, the water supplies for Isalia are directly impacted by what's gonna happen on, on the Friant.
I have, I have a quick question, are we under deadline to do this today? Is there a reason why we couldn't let the attorneys bash us around and do it next week?
When, when Ron meets with the Friant District, I think it, we need to show up a, a position. I would say for, uh, groundwater reach, uh, groundwater mitigation, for water for domestic purposes.
How about, um, the, what I said before, on the, instead of domestic use, on the water balance of the eastern, uh, side of San Joaquin Valley, something of that nature? So we're talking about water balance, we're talking about water table and so forth, what we're, what we're concerned about here is that the water balance is gonna be impacted by the absence of water, which is now being used to create that, maintain that balance, and so when, that, it's a very broad approach that way.
Okay. I, I think the essence is, we, it could be that loose, because we, this, we're suggesting to the settling parties, I would add that clause. Is it clear? Michelle? Okay. I need a motion.
As the author, I appreciate if somebody else can make the motion.
Is that not how that works?
Well, I can make the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the, uh, suggested, the requested language with the, as is modified, to include a Section C.
Second.
May please cast your vote.
Section C says what?
Vote is unanimous to add Section C and approve the language, uh, in item seventeen.
I want, Mr. Chairman, I think we should extend our thanks to Ron coming this morning and, and giving us the benefit of input on this subject, and it's very important to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, for also.
Ron, I appreciate your opinion as a, let's see, it was a lawyer, a biologist, fishery guy, I don't know.
Yeah, I practice law, but it's in private. Thank you again. Okay, moving back to item three, uh, we will now take up agenda items number three and four, and is there staff to present this item, these items?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Beverly Cates, I'm the Division Manager for Project Review at Resource Management Agency. We have, uh, two public hearings, um, and they're connected by the fact that the first item is the General Plan Amendments, and we are, um, allowed to have four General Plan Amendments a year. We try to group them for cleanup and applicant-initiated General Plan Amendments, we'll try to have three this year, and then reserving the fourth for the major Tulare County General Plan update. This, uh, General Plan Amendment involves three portions, um, and they are, um, related to the Goshen Community Plan, the Early Mart Community Plan, and the Farmersville Land Use Plan, which also includes a urban boundaries element update. So, um, what we would like to do is first introduce and waive the first reading of the three amendments to the ordinance, get that out of the way, um, that's for the zone changes, we'll later take up the zone changes and their second readings. So we would need three votes on the introduction and, uh, waiving of the first readings.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, does that require the public hearing process to be opened for that, or do we take action prior to the public?
Before.
Prior, we introduce, and I'm sorry, I thought you all had the script, because if I can, we're, we're trying, as, as strange as this may sound, we're actually trying to save time by avoiding two public hearings, a series of public hearings, but this is the first time we've done this, it's a little different. Uh, we did have a, a script, which I thought all the board members had, but...
He hesitated, that was the problem.
Yes, we, we introduce, then we open the public hearing, then we go. Used to put this on a set public hearing, so it wasn't a, a public hearing.
So that's what we're trying to do, is combine two public hearings into, into one, so I need a set of motions to, before I can open the public hearing.
Read your script, so we'll know how to move.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance amending the zoning, the zoning ordinance for change of zone number PZ zero five five zero five.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
He's, you're too the only one to have it, so.
Well, it's just all he's asking for is the motion, so, and, and then weekend.
We're going through these steps right here.
Okay, second.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, part two, uh, need a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for change of zone number PZ zero six dash zero zero one.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, cast your vote, motion passes unanimously. Then we need to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the change zone number PZ zero five dash zero zero seven.
So move.
Second. Moving second, please cast your ballot, motion passes unanimously, now we're to open the public hearing.
We would like to, um, have the three segments, I will introduce the, um, topic of the General Plan Amendment for the Goshen Community Plan, and then there are two other people that will be doing the, um, other elements. Uh, this first one is for the General Plan Amendment requested by Pacific Real Estate Holdings, uh, General Plan Amendment oh five oh three. This is a vicinity map showing that it's located, um, on the side of Goshen.
Beverly, I think, I think technically counsel that the public hearing is not open, I'm gonna close the public hearing and reopen it after you make your presentation.
Isn't really.
Okay.
Uh, this General Plan Amendment was requested, uh, to facilitate this tentative subdivision map, it's a division for seventy residential lots and, uh, three ponding lots, um, currently the area, um, nine acres of the site, approximately this area, is designated as commercial, the balance is already designated for residential use, um, and there was at one time a, a thought that there would be a, a community cluster for community, community commercial, um, on the east side of Goshen, uh, the current, uh, thought is to, uh, remove that, there is a, a General Plan Amendment processed, um, and the proposal, as you see it today, is consistent with the proposed General Plan. Uh, the current zoning of the site is A1, it was, uh, never zoned to implement the General Plan, uh, their individual, uh, rezonings have come through, this R2 was, uh, rezoned by an individual application, fills some surrounding A1 zoning. This is a aerial photo of the site, there's a church located on the corner, and then this is a self-help, uh, multiple-family development residential, and this is a KOA RV campground, and the site is located here. Photograph of the site, uh, looking north from Avenue four oh eight, a little bit farther to the northwest, you can see the self-help, multiple-family development, this is looking west down Avenue three oh eight on the north side of the road, uh, adjacent to the site, you can see the church on the right-hand side there, and then this is looking east down Avenue three oh eight towards the, uh, KOA campground. And there was a negative declaration prepared for the project, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on November twenty ninth, there was no opposition to the project, uh, the Planning Commission did take final action on the subdivision, uh, subject to approval of the General Plan Amendment and zone change, and, uh, that concludes my portion.
Supervisor Cox?
My standard questions, if you would, this will be a self-sustaining, it'll pay its own way, pay for its own streets, there'll be a landscape and/or lighting district that will maintain this subdivision from now until ever, forever?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is that a question or a statement?
Both.
That was covered under the subdivision, which is not before you today.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, is there anyone, when public hearing is open, is there anyone wishing to speak to this, this matter? Seeing that public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, I, I very supportive of this amendment, the, the self-help project that was built out there is a beautiful, um, multiple-family residence that I'm sure is an attraction to, and the reason why the developer wants to come to this property, which surrounds it, to develop it, uh, it was initially thought this might be commercial. Uh, in twenty-eight years of the General Plan, there's never been an application for commercial use on this property, and you can understand why. Uh, wisely, the new General Plan will put, the, uh, commercial off of the ninety-nine to take advantage of the ninety-nine presence, so that you have freeway, commercial, as well as people who live there, and that's a much, makes a lot more sense, I think, uh, to do that, so I, I would move to approve, is it time for a motion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
You're gonna take off all three of them?
Right, trying to not, uh, be too confusing, we actually need three separate votes, but before you vote on the zoning ordinances, you must adopt, uh, move to adopt, since you combined the hearings, you must move to adopt the General Plan Amendments.
So I'm premature in my motion.
Well, well, the first motion would be to adopt the General Plan Amendments, and then you would need...
We wanna have the public hearing on all three first, because you only want one motion.
Right, gotcha, okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Charlotte Roswellis, RMA, Project Review Division. Uh, this request is, uh, the applicant is requesting a General Plan Amendment and a zone change to allow him to construct and, and operate an automobile tire and repair garage on a six thousand square foot lot. The amendment is to the Early Mart Community Plan, uh, to change the land use designation from, uh, low-density residential to highway commercial. This also includes a change in the implementing, uh, zoning, which would be from R1 to C3, uh, service commercial. Um, the site is located at the southeast corner of State Street and Kern Avenue, just east of State Highway ninety-nine and north of Avenue forty-eight in Early Mart. The, basically, the site plan just contains two residences, one of which will be demolished and replaced with a tire shop, uh, the one designated as the second residence, the second home, uh, will be demolished. The site is presently zoned R1, uh, properties adjacent to the north and the east are zoned, um, also for residential and commercial further east, past Church Street. Properties adjacent to the south and the west are zoned C3, uh, service commercial and contain commercial, uh, businesses. State Route ninety-nine is also just to the west of the site. The proposed C3 zoning is the implementing zoning that will allow the tire and automobile repair shop. The SR, um, Site Plan Review Overlay Zone is also recommended, in this case, provide adequate review of the projects since it, since it will be adjacent to residential development, um, issues that arise can be taken, uh, can be addressed at the preliminary and/or final site plan stage, um, to reduce any impacts that might, um, be from the project. The, uh, Early Mart Community Plan designates the site as low-density residential, and it's difficult to see, but, and I, my arrow's not working here, but it's, there it is, right there. Designates the site as low-density residential, State Street is designated as a collector street, um, and properties to the east and north, uh, and west are designated as low-density, low-density residential, and to the west and south are designated highway commercial. Site is located, six thousand square foot lot, um, this is a, the subject site, this is one of the second residence area that will be demolished upon, um, construction of the tire shop. This blue building that you see is the residence, which is occupied by the applicant. This is another view of the area that will be cleaned up and demolished, taken out there, you can see there's quite a bit of debris around this one residence, this, you're looking at Kern Street, looking east, and, um, the residence, uh, the applicant's residence is on this corner. This is a, a commercial, um, development just, uh, west, uh, across from State Street, across from the, uh, property site. This one is another, uh, operation west of the site, facing, um, fronting Avenue forty-eight, and this one is just south of the subject site, uh, also fronting Avenue forty-eight. Uh, it's rather dark, but this is a, an, a photograph of showing commercial businesses along, um, Avenue forty-eight, there are also commercial businesses, um, south of forty-eight and along the freeway area. On January seventeenth, um, the, uh, two thousand seven, the Planning Commission, uh, recommended that your board amend the Early Mart Community Plan, certify the negative declaration, and amend the zoning regulations as requested by the applicant, with the modification to that request to include the SR Site Plan Review Overlay Zone, and there was no opposition to this proposal at the Planning Commission. And that concludes staff's report.
Do you have any questions, any comments on this project?
It may not be on the project specific, um, and I maybe should've asked this sooner, I'm aware of at least one other person who was looking for some type of, uh, change on the General Plan, close to this project, is that, I mean, you had mentioned in the opening statement that, that we do this periodically and we try to group them together, was that one not ready for review, or is that, it was not ready? Okay, because it just seems like if we're doing it, and we know we had two or three out there, it would be appropriate to be doing them all at once. The one I'm thinking of is just a gentleman's property is split by, uh, by the border of the plan, and, uh, I mean, it's half in, half out, and he just wants it all in, Georgia's saying no. No what? Oh, well, he sent me a letter that I got. Okay, I thought that they weren't gonna file, that what they were looking for us to do, neither the General Plan Amendment or this type of action would be to straighten that out. Okay, now I'm going someplace where we don't need to be. Okay, now I'm going someplace where we don't need to be. George is up. It's all right, I need to hear it. Thank you, all for indulging me.
George, if any, Resource Management Agency. He's, the part you're talking about is going to approach the Early Mart Development, Developers' Group first, to see if he can join with that, if it's feasible for him to join with that group.
Is that still happening? And that wasn't the impression that the gentleman gave me, but that's okay.
Hasn't been withdrawn yet.
It's not on the agenda today, I realize that. I'm just, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
A quick cleanup one. With projects like this, would they require curb gutters, sidewalks, things of that nature that I didn't see?
There's not curb and gutter located along that area now, but when it goes to site plan review, the project will be forwarded for consultation to our engineers, and they will make that decision at that time. And then it will be a...
But on a new project like this in a community, things like that are required, aren't they?
Oftentimes, they are, but not always.
I mean, you put a curb and a gutter in, it keeps your streets clean if you just have dirt. It's going to be dirty. Sorry. Thank you for indulging my common sense comment.
Okay, let's get back on the script. Let's move to Farmersville.
We always have to stay on script. It's a public hearing.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Well, I think what we're looking for is all the presentations, then I'll open the public hearing for all matters, for all three.
I'm Susan Simon, the planner for RMA for this project. The site is located...
Mr. Chairman, before we start this one, is, does this have to do with a boat shop?
That is correct.
Okay, I did some work for this gentleman less than two years ago, so I think I need to, I need to stand up and leave for this particular one.
Well, you're not going to, because it's one motion, you're not going to be able to vote on any of the general plan amendments.
Okay, so I need to leave for the remainder?
Correct.
I'm going to come get my...
We're going to concentrate.
The site is located south of State Highway 198 and north of Farmersville. Hans and Carol Steiner requested to amend the urban boundary element and the Farmersville Area Plan from agricultural. Rural Valley's Land Plan to service commercial land use designation within the Farmersville Urban Area Boundary on a 2.75-acre parcel. The general plan amendment is to exclude the site from the Farmersville Urban Area Boundary and use the Tulare County, Tulare Irrigation Company ditch as the boundary line, and make it subject to the Rural Valley's Land Plan. Under the Rural Valley Land Plan Evaluation System, the site would receive eight points and can be considered for non-agricultural zoning. Neither parcel is within the Farmersville 20-year urban development boundary. The applicants have requested this general plan amendment to allow the site to be brought into formation for a boat sales and service operation. In addition, the applicant requested a zone change from the AE20 exclusive agricultural 20-acre minimum zone to C3SC, service commercial scenic corridor. Staff recommended the rezoning be modified to include the SR, site plan review overlay zone. A public hearing was held on February 14th, 2007. At that time, the planning commission recommended approval of the general plan amendment and modification, and approval of the C3SC SR zone. There was a negative declaration prepared for the application. And as you can see, the boats are existing out there. And no opposition was received at the time, and this concludes staff report.
Do we have any questions? We're being back to the board. Seeing none, we're back to the script, and we're going to open the public hearing on all three items. And interested parties will have three minutes to speak. The only exception to the limit will be at my discretion. You may not yield your time to others. And please state your name and your address when you address the podium. I would first ask for those that are here to speak and oppose any of these items, then we'll go to the people who are in support of these items. So with that, all three items are open in the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
And I'll entertain a motion. Yes?
Four motions altogether. I've been, I've been double-checking this, just to make, you need one motion to adopt all of the proposed general plan amendments. Then you will need three motions, each to certify the environmental review, et cetera, and adopt the ordinance zoning changes. So four total.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the general plan amendments as they apply to all three projects.
Second? All in favor? Please cast your ballot.
If you oppose, you can't cast her.
Come on, Connie, make a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm busy looking in.
I would move to certify the environmental review and waive the second reading and approve the ordinance for change of zone number PZ05-505 per staff's recommendations.
I second that, is that what you'd like me to do?
Please cast your ballot. Motion carries unanimously.
I would move now to certify the environmental review, waive the second reading, and approve the ordinance for change of zone number PZ06-001 per staff's recommendations.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I move to certify the environmental review, waive the second reading, and approve the ordinance for change zone number PZ05-007 per staff's recommendations.
Your motion? Seconded. Seconded. Please cast your vote. Your vote is unanimous. Double oh seven, all right, here's the motion.
It's not like James Bond.
Yeah, I know. This one was a little difficult to get on the same page here. I think we'll try a different meeting.
Well, actually, it's the first time we've done it this way.
It's the first time we've done it this way, and I have been thinking to myself that, you know, this is how government simplifies things. It's been a little awkward, and I do apologize for that, but it does mean that people only have to, assuming there were people that wanted to be here, they would only have to come one time.
And I think, actually, if we had each had a copy of that script that you gave to the chairman in advance, so we would know, we could have played the...
I apologize. I...
That's fine.
...get to you.
And Miss Conway, it's this...
I didn't get the memo.
Yep. Bill, come back, yeah.
No, leave him out there.
There he is. He's back.
Now, it, we're all, we're all running the place all the time, it's surprising it doesn't...
We're going to have a public hearing. No public hearings.
Yeah, I do.
We had a public hearing, there's nobody to talk to.
Okay, we have a timed item for 11 o'clock.
Because we already rehearsed five of the matters. Nineteen.
Okay, we can go and board two five of the matters.
The only thing I'm concerned about is working with the people of the area, so concerned about our force, about the management of our force, and we're having a meeting in Porterville tonight, and everybody can voice their concerns about our watersheds, and hopefully how we can protect our watersheds, and not only protect them, but guard against catastrophic fires in our mountain areas. So be attending that meeting tonight.
I don't think I have anything in particular of interest to you today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Surprise.
Well, I will hand out a, I've already got Supervisor Conway, a copy of today's editorial from the Times Delta. Last week, I discussed efforts of the Gang Task Force to provide free bus service to youth to attend community centers in the city of Isalia, and working very diligently on that. This week, we encountered some road bumps with our transportation people at RMA, and I would like to respectfully ask that this board come back next week with an agenda item, so that we can freely, in public, discuss our support for an activity of this nature, for the county providing a bus route that would do Ivanhoe and Goshen, bringing those youth into the Isalia Loop. So I would hope to gain support, and this could be duplicated, and Supervisor Conway said, yeah, we need to do something like this in my area, too. This is something that could be duplicated in other areas of the county. So I would hope that this board would be receptive of bringing this to the board next week, so that we can give direction to our staff, instead of staff giving direction to us, so that we can move forward.
Thank you. Yes. Supervisor Wirthly?
I would support that request by Mr. Cox. I, this morning, I was at my Rotary Club in Dinuba, and a member who is the general manager for the Alta Irrigation District provided me with a draft of a water supply study for the Cutler-Nerosi area, in which surface waters would be utilized to provide drinking water, potable water supplies for that region, not only Cutler-Nerosi, but East Nerosi, Yedem, Seville, so it's a larger area. And it looks very, very good. I mean, this is the kind of thing which the Alta is hoping they can actually get funding from the state of California. This project could be underway in as little as two to three years. And this is a tremendous way to deal with our nitrate issues, DBCP issues, any kind of other water contamination issues in this region. And one of the things that gives them a lot of hope is they have the water. You know, you can have all kinds of good ideas about building infrastructure, but unless you've got some way to plumb the, or put water in those pipes, it doesn't do you a whole lot of good. But the Alta's worked diligently in planning to provide for more water, which would then be used, and they can, it's a win-win situation for the district. They would be able to sell the water, which would help keep the cost down for irrigation purposes for the farmers, and it would provide the water supply to the community that would be free from contamination. So it's a very interesting project, and it could be very, very good for our district, and may serve as a model for others as well.
Okay, I just remembered that, looking at my calendar, we were at CSAC. Was there anything important to come out of CSAC?
Well, in addition to the visits with legislators across the street, there, the policy committee decisions were made, and I sat in on three different of those policy committee meetings, not entirely, but at least partially. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe you had an item on the agenda of the Ag and Natural Resources Committee, was that correct?
That's correct.
And for the record, then, I guess, that the CSAC policy at that time, CSAC had an existing policy dealing with local land use decisions and how those are made. And I believe that at the Ag and Natural Resources Policy Committee, the suggestion was made more specific to AB 576. I believe there was support registered there that will be taken to the executive committee and then to the Board of Directors, but the existing policy already exists, so CSAC is on record as being in opposition to AB 576. Thank you for your leadership in that effort, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you doing that.
You're the front guy, that was easy.
In your role as chairman, we do appreciate the fact that you're taking that very seriously.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Conway.
No problem.
Last week, when we were at CSAC, on our last day, evening there, I ran across a group of people. One was Mario Santoya from the Front Water Users, and he was with a group of Henry Perea Jr. and a couple other civic leaders. And they had been lobbying the Hispanic Caucus for support for Temperance Flat Dam. So from that conversation, we sit down and we talked about what Tulare County was doing, and I mentioned the fact that we are, have reinstituted our water commission. From that meeting that evening, my supervisor, Ennis, and I were invited to a meeting at Provost and Pritchard's office last Friday, which, where we talked about collaboration in our efforts on our water commission. And we had a group, a very diverse group there, that I believe were very supportive of our efforts of starting the water commission over again. And because of that meeting, I've scheduled another meeting for Friday at 4:00 in the board chambers to talk about the makeup of the water commission. Now, at this point in time, we are looking at having, each supervisor will name, appoint one member to the water commission. That person does not have to reside in your district. And the reason for that is that we have a lot of water experts who work in the Tuli Drainage, the Kawea Drainage, and they have other responsibilities in the area of water that live in the city of Isaya. But they do cover the whole county, so we didn't want to restrict it too geographically to our individual districts. There will be four members at large. One member, I'm sure, will be, will be from an environmental group. We need them at the table when we talk about water issues. So I think it was very timely of the board to reinstitute the water commission last week, because it's time for us to gather the information that Supervisor Wirthly has presented to us today, and other information, so we can come to a water, county water policy, which is really going to direct the future growth of our county. So, and there's also a big pot of money out there for us who are prepared to get money to help do our studies for a regional water program. So I'm very excited about the fact that we actually reinstated the water commission prior to all the other things, the events that are happening at a very rapid pace. And I want to commend Supervisor Cox for talking to the city of Isaya about the gang prevention and using the bus system. I think it's very important that we bring Goshen and Ivanhoe, hopefully, into the system, and we'll discuss the cost, and hopefully, with some parameters, that we can judge the effectiveness of the program. Yesterday, I had the privilege to sit down with Diane Feinstein and about 20 other community members, and I would say probably publicly, this is the first time she has supported the addition, well, she has supported additional surface water storage in the state of California. So that, to me, that's, it was an important step on her part, which leads for more support for Temperance Flat or other storage facilities in the state of California. This Thursday, we'll be meeting with Senator Boxer, she'll be in town, and we hope to also talk to her about the freeze-related relief, and try to get her on board for more water storage in California.
That may be a tough one, so...
Yeah, that might be real tough. Yeah, that might be real tough. So with that, that ends my public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I said I probably didn't have anything, but as you're speaking, you're bringing a lot of things to mind, especially in the, the water efforts, and the, the beauty of working regionally. I know you mentioned the group that you ran into that was kind of working as a region, and it jogged my memory a little bit that we did, actually, while we were all in Sacramento last week, we had a, I actually had two meetings to do with the California Partnership for the San Joaquin Valley. One was a seed grant meeting to make that final decision, determination on seed grants for pilot projects. We had actually narrowed it down, but even in narrowing it down, we had eleven million dollars' worth of projects asked, and we had two and a half million dollars to, to grant, which we did then subsequently at a meeting on Thursday. And there, several of those projects are of a regional basis, so they will involve our county superintendent of schools, the EDC, our, some of our folks from HHSA for a methamphetamine group deal, the telemedicine project from UCMR Said, several of them that'll be far-reaching, and we'll have that announced more formally as we put it together. One project that was specific to Tulare County involved also the COG and a local conservation group in mitigation banking and how that will all work, kind of running as a, as a pilot project for the rest of the region of the partnership. So it was an interesting meeting. There was one piece of legislation that I want to mention, AB 1403 by Assemblymember Arambula, which will be giving another pilot project, if you will. This is actual legislation that the partnership has in, voted to support at this point, as it is written, freeing up low-scoring schools to be separated somewhat from the throes or the chains of categoricals, and their finances will be separate. There'll be an opportunity for others to weigh in on how those schools are governed and run. It's a well-thought-out bill. As I say, another project, our superintendent of schools is, is involved in this. And I think it's just bringing back to mind that as we work together, whether it's water, whether it's schools, whether it's land use, whatever it is, when we look at things regionally and we meet, when we work together regionally, we have a, a bigger say in our future. And I think it bodes well for us that we have always appreciated our partners, the San Joaquin Valley Regional Supervisors Association, but we're taking it a step further in all of the issues that we have. And speaking of that, San Joaquin Valley Regional Supervisors Association, we are the host this year for that meeting, which will be happening in another two weeks. So just another opportunity to work together as a region. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you're welcome. And it brings up something that I think is important, is when we went to, in Tulare County Association of Governors, we prepare our projects in advance so they're ready to go to construction, and that's why we were able to get a lot of funds for Tulare County. It also is a game plan that county that we adopt, is that we need to have our, our plans in order, like our gang task force. We need to have everything ready to go, that we can go to our assemblyman or someone and say, this is our project.
Kind of like a business plan, huh?
Right.
Strategic plan.
So we have to have more than an idea. We need to have a plan. And that's the same with our, our county water commission. We need to have a plan before we go ask for money. So I think everything's very timely of us preparing. Okay, moving to Council.
Close session.
Do we have need for close session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. We have items A through C listed on your close session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
We can share. Is that a loose leaf? Here, let me take this.
Apparently my printer didn't choose to let me see.
I think it's two more. It's for them to follow, it's not going to be up on the screen, so might be helpful to have. Oh, sure.
Hey, Brian. I wanted to, um, they're honing in using a GPS system and, uh, so.
This looks very debate-like or...
It's moot court.
Wristband, eh?
Or do you?
Have you?
Green Bay Packers.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't want to give me to your granddaddy?
I'll have, they're all out of, in Seattle.
Sure, I'll take these, I'll take these and give them to little, uh, to Emily and Emily and Sarah, little Kate's too small.
Okay.
Okay, I was gonna talk about giving you...
I guess I've got a, uh...
When you were mentioning 4pm...
No.
Okay, is it this Friday?
This Friday.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so we'll be done in a bit.
That's what we're here for.
Okay. No, it's not, basically, all I'm asking is for Mike and myself to...
Fine, an untimed, an untimed item that we could just sit here and talk about the actual costs, I mean, I don't think it'd take more than five minutes to talk about what the costs actually are. And then to tell our need, this is what he's gonna do instead of quit telling us what you don't want to do.
Before?
Do what you're told.
No, I, I, I think what you're doing is...
Did you read, did you read those emails to us?
Yes, yeah, we're exploring, we're, we're exploring, we're getting back to me about the legality of...
Right, basically, we had an increase.
You being too conservative in communication.
It appeared to me that there was a slight increase.
It's time.
I just got your phone message five minutes ago.
Okay, good.
Pardon?
Wasn't given final approval today?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey.
My new...
Thanks.
I want to tell you, when people go out, they brag about their children, et cetera, what county councils are...
Oh, I think, I think we're very well...
That they never beat...
We passed our resolution today about adding the language state bill, we understand, we're not partying to the bill, this is why they want to make sure we keep pressure up, that some litigation, conflict litigation comes out of it.
Oh, yes.
No, we're not here to... Well, I'll give it to you, you need a slight adjustment to look at.
It's a mess.
Yeah, how are you? But, yes.
Huh? Early will.
No, my wife's asleep and I...
She wouldn't know.
I'm not Connie, I'm not all here today. Cookie Monster.
I didn't see Cookie Monster.
Dear life.
Is that, is this girl's hair... Uh, yeah, yeah, that's it.
Hey, Brian. Wanted to... They're honing in using a GPS system and...
Wristband, eh? Pardon? Have you?
Green Bay Packers.
Okay.
I don't have... They're all out of...
Sure, I'll take these. I'll take these and give them to Emily and Sarah. Kate's too small. Okay, I was gonna talk about... I guess I've got a...
No.
Okay. Is it this Friday?
This Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be done in a bit. That's what we're here for. Okay.
No, it's not. Basically, all I'm asking is for Mike and myself to...
Find an untimed item that we could just sit here and talk about the actual costs. I mean, I don't think it'd take more than five minutes to talk about what the costs actually are. And then to tell our need, this is what he's gonna do instead of quit telling us what you don't want to do.
Before?
Do what you're told.
No, I... Think what you're doing is...
Did you read those emails to us?
We're exploring... We're shooting to get back to you about the legality of...
Right. Basically, we had an increase.
You being too conservative.
It appeared to me that there was a slight increase.
I just got your phone message five minutes ago.
Okay, good.
Received in.
Pardon?
Wasn't given final approval today?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to tell you, when people go out, they brag about their children, et cetera. What county councils are...
Oh, I think it went very well.
Never be...
We passed our resolution today about adding the language. Thank you. We understand. We're not party to the bill. This is why they want to make sure we keep pressure up and suffer mitigation, concrete mitigation, because it's out of... Give it to you. You need a slight adjustment to look at.
It's a mess.
Yeah, how are you? Yes.
Early.
No, my wife's asleep and I...
She wouldn't know.
I'm not Connie. I'm not all here today. Cookie Monster.
I didn't see Cookie Monster. Is this Girl's... Eric's gonna try that one? Yeah, that's it. He wants to ask you a question. I'm just giving you a hard time. I made sure these were stored in refrigerators so mice didn't eat them. I can't say the same for that piece of cake. Yeah, we have mice, but these don't have mice.
Get away. Get away.
Those are the things we see on the tables. We just call that wild rice. We don't call them mice.
I saw, you know, I saw it on the floor today. It looked like a hamster's cocker.
Yeah, after budget work. When you get the budget, the mice are crazier because they spend all night.
That's not healthy living. Don't be putting cookies in my...
Take two every four hours and you'll feel better.
I have.
This would have a board agenda item, the documents that you...
I'm having, you know, like my pants that I was wearing. My claw chains down about here. I got working four or five in here. I got a bunch of that.
Oh, guess what? Mine's good.
Bill, are we all here?
And the VPN, I can...
Great, how are you? Good to see you. Bill, how are you?
I can't imagine meeting you.
Good to see ya.
Well, that alone. Hey, homie. Did you get my voicemail?
I did. Thank you very much.
My phone was dead. Oh, yes. Yeah, we had a nice visit. So cute. I can report him for you.
We're still waiting for one or two people, so...
I can report him for you.
He's starting a little bit later. I mean, there's... Maples is so big. Plus that bald spot. Those cameras never make me know where it's been. Part of our...
The what?
Outcast.
I think they do a Connie hair down there.
I guess build the lanes out with them, see if anyone's here.
Yeah, they're waiting for a couple people.
Steve, I've never heard anyone tell me why they have curb and gutter out there. Never had anyone say anything. Well, and there may be other operating benefits. I think there's some little benefit on your roads, you know, because it protects the edge of your roads in front of degradation. But I'm honest, there is another counter argument sometimes. Then you have another problem sometimes if you don't have a, you know, if you don't plan for a whole area, doesn't curb and gutter go one street for one location because then how do you... This isn't weeds. This isn't a weed cutting session.
They must have association with these. That's what most... The other thing, too, is that they need not, well...
Well, that is...
They do it themselves.
Traffic road is the... That's a highness road.
So you bring a few people...
Like on our street, everyone parks on the streets. A lot of streets sweep the grass down the middle of the street.
Oh, is that right? They don't have a...
Goes right back out. They do, but no one, I mean, everyone just sweeps their own gutters. I had a relative used to work in Saltine. She had a rest, she had a store down in Saltine. Every merchant went out every day and swept their half feet back to their sidewalk. You know, that's explained by the place was so clean and always looked so nice. It's just they had that kind of a ethic about it and everybody did it. That's not the ethic in Sultana. See, if I had a hundred feet of curb and gutter in front of my house and the others didn't, I'd know exactly where to sweep my crap. I'd sweep it right out. Can't get it to disperse on there. We have a feed store in Sultana that it's almost like a manager. You go there, they have all kinds of birds, tropical birds and chickens and ducks and geese and everything. And they grow up there and they wash their, all their droppings and stuff into the, into the... Drain system, which I'm sure is not all that beneficial, but it's clean. I mean, you're out there every day and they're sweeping, everything's swept off and washed down and their curb is clean, you know, like from their store. Did you look at that? Did you look at the, the big shoots that give us? Places there where, I mean, you got dips and you got stuff that raised up this far on the road. In fact, I, you know, a lot, when I first came on the board, it was at the very tail end of an allocation.
I remember that.
And I, all of my money that I had, I spent in Ocean. We won't say anything negative about you. Always say positive stuff.
Hi, Mom.
Appropriate time to take these to you. What it may is deal with theirs. I don't know.
Frankly, they should have given them to them because, I mean, you don't even have that much roads in your...
Talking about roads and chickens and ducks and exotic birds. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Want to start? Yeah, go ahead.
Does Brian Tilburn not know how to get here, Bill?
Pardon me?
Brian Tilburn not know how to get to this location?
That adjustment was very thorough and complete.
Hey, we're going to begin with the introduction to get into the meat of it until our other representatives get there. So, Mr. Haddix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item pertains to the Community Choice Aggregation Study Session. And the intent is to raise the body knowledge of your board on the basic elements of a community choice, should your board choose to move forward in that direction. And if I could, I'd like to go through just a brief background introduction of what community choice aggregation is all about. And the predominant source of my information is from the Local Government Commission funded through the Department of Energy, U.S. Department of Energy, and the California Energy Commission. Basically, the Community Choice Aggregation, CCA, is an entity that enables California cities and counties to supply electricity to customers within their borders, their, within borders. It's not a municipal utility like we know of Sacramento Municipal Utility District or down in Los Angeles, SMUD, yes, because it doesn't own the transmission and delivery systems. Simply, it simply supplies the electricity. It's only responsible for the energy commodity that it provides over the lines. The value to, of a CCA tends to be predominantly, it allows the option for various types of power to local authorities. So it provides for local control over retail rates and sources of power within the boundaries of the, of the community choice aggregation entity. Historically, public entities have been able to offer rates fifteen to twenty percent lower than investor-owned utilities. And the material that I have cited here, Local Governments Commission noted that Roseville, a public utility, is the nation's most reliable utility for less than a hundred thousand customers. Stepping back from community choice aggregation, we can see historically what got us to this point is that in 1997, California's electricity market was deregulated through AB 1890. Basically, new power suppliers were allowed to enter into the state and a number of customers switched from investor-owned utilities to these new entrants into the market, the California market. Then in around 2000, 2001, California plunged into its electricity crisis and the law of the energy deregulation was changed. And the ability to enter into electric service contracts by individuals within the state was suspended. And then in 2002, AB 117 was signed into law. And this basically created the, this entity known as community choice aggregation, this concept, and it removed the hurdle for local governments to provide electricity to communities. One of the aspects of this is implementation plans. When the California Public Utility Commission began to, to take up the issue of community choice aggregation, it's assisting them in developing implementation plans and to complete the registration. The PUC also sets cost responsibility surcharge, so this cost for customers who leave an investor-owned service. And they set this surcharge so that the, those customers who remain, who are part of the IOUs, the investor-owned utility, those who remain as others leave, that they don't get a disproportionate hit to their bills. The Local Government Commission also noted that community choice aggregations being utilized in other states, for example, in Ohio, ninety percent of those who've switched, have switched over have gone to community choice aggregation. And the biggest entity has 118 cities and 600,000 customers. And this entity, according to the commission, experienced a discount of four to six percent on their power costs. Likewise, Massachusetts, Cape Light Compact, 21 towns with 200,000 customers, and Rhode Island has an entity with 36 cities. And the commission noted that, that particular CCA there in the first four months experienced multimillion dollar savings. So the question that your board will be looking at will be issues of, of local control, how does this affect economic growth, but also issues of risk. And that's a key element to balance here. The community choice aggregation rates, you know, could potentially be higher than IOUs. And this is based on the management of, the CCA's management of purchasing and developing rate stabilization funds. Lastly, I'd just like to state here that you have before you a board agenda packet that clearly kind of walks through what we're doing here. That for the sake of those who don't have the packet, on December 5th of this year, your board approved the initial step for Tulare County to consider joining a CCA program. And at that time, your board approved a request, to request electrical demand information for Tulare County from Southern California Edison and Pacific Gas and Electric. And the data was then forwarded to the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority's consultant that's helping them put this together. And that consultant's Navigant Consulting to complete electrical feasibility study. The consultant has analyzed that data and is working to include Tulare County information into their model. This study session will allow your board to further review community choice aggregation programs so that you can consider possible participation in the program in the future. And it's anticipated that representatives from, well, not only anticipated, but we all have them here now, from not only the Power Authority, but also Pacific Gas and Electric and Southern California Edison to join in this study session. I will add that the electrical feasibility study did show that, that according to what Navigant had derived, that it could be, there could be economic savings on the energy generation side should Tulare County participate. Now, you have to weigh some of the concerns, risks, and other features that I would believe the, the current status quo entities would, would like you to factor into the equation. So with that, also, Leslie, we mentioned that AB 117 created the program and that this allows, which allows cities, counties, and joint powers agencies comply, composed of cities and counties to aggregate electric loads within the jurisdictional boundary and acquire or generate electricity for the program. And that the, and that the investor-owned utilities are compelled by law to support and assist the establishment of community, community choice aggregation programs. And this power is provided to the local IOUs who then deliver meters, bills, and, I thought you had me on the three-minute timer there, Chairman. There you go. Man, I haven't even sucked in air yet. That's my first breath working on this one. You wait till the other breaths come. Okay, so this power is provided to, to the local IOUs who then deliver meter bills and perform customer services they do. Over the past two years, cities of Clovis, Corcoran, Dinuba, Fresno, Hanford, Kerman, Kingsburg, Lemoore, Parlier, Reedley, Selma, Sanger, and Kings County have worked cooperatively in conjunction with Kings River Conservation District to study the feasibility of a CCA program within the 1.2 million acre KRCD boundary in the form of a joint powers agency proposed as the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority. Each of the participants committed about 20,000 to conduct the feasibility study, as did your board, with KRCD paying the remainder. This feasibility study was commissioned and completed, including an independent peer review, and it indicated the CCA program comprised of the participants could save electricity consumers within the CCA program area approximately $780 million over the next 19 years. On January 25th, 2007, the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority Board of Directors was formally established. At the same time, a meeting, at the same meeting, a vote was held to submit the CCA implementation plan to the California Public Utilities Commission. And the initial implementation plan did not include Tulare County, which I'll get to in a moment. Briefly, Mr. Chairman, officials from Southern California Edison and Pacific Gas and Electric have reviewed the implementation plan and submitted the comments to the PUC. The foundation for the CCA program will be a 500-megawatt natural gas-fired base load power plant to be located near Parlier, projected to come online around 2010. The CCA program proposes a four-phase implementation beginning in August 2007, with facilities owned by the participants receiving power from the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority first, and completing implementation with a November 2008 start date for all power accounts. Until the base load power plant comes online, though, the authority will purchase power contracts from third parties that will become a part of the power generation portfolio in a similar fashion as the IOUs. Now, one of the things I'd like to point out is that while we're here today talking about this, there is a fairly tight timeline. Those other communities that joined on came on within the last, oh, over the last two years. And should your board wish to move forward in this direction, it's kind of catching, catching the train as it's just leaving the station. And so the timeline is rather tight. So we have on, you have the work session today. And based on that, your board can take up a resolution on April 10th as to whether it wants to join the authority or not. And then on the 12th, this is how the timeline would map out, the authority would then consider whether it wishes to bring Tulare County into its JPA. And then once everybody's decided, you know, does one entity, is Tulare County considering to join? And would the authority say yes if Tulare County considers? Then your board on the 17th would have to do the final decision of passing enabling ordinance to join the authority and become a community choice aggregator. So very tight timeline, but the date to, to say yes or no on this would be the 17th. And then on June 5th, the ordinance would take effect. If you're... And then on June 5th, the ordinance would take effect, and if your board so chooses, and everything moves forward from there. So tight timeline, up or down votes on the 17th of April. And to that, Mr. Chairman, is my ever-so-brief introduction.
I want to make it clear that this is a steady group. There will be no action taken today. This subject is almost as complicated as water issues, so it was a great deal of education on the part of the public and ourselves as board members. So with that, I would like to start with Mr. Orth. Presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm David Orth, General Manager of Kings River Conservation District. Crystal Tufankian, who is the Manager of Community Relations and Public Affairs, is here, and I would like to introduce two of my board members, Board President Mark McKean and Board Member Norm Waldner here as well this morning. I want to give you some basic additional background. Mr. Haddix has done a very fine job in kind of laying out for you some of the reasons or some of the background relative to community choice. We have some very preliminary demographics that came out of the, or that have been developed out of the customer data that was provided to us through your efforts of December, and then kind of talk to you in a little bit more detail about next steps. As you're aware, and as Mr. Haddix pointed out, in the midst of what is now called the 2001 energy crisis, the Kings River Conservation District initiated a study to determine what actions, if anything, we could take to alleviate growing concerns about energy reliability and cost for the region. Our district has a strong record in developing regional resource management solutions and believed, and still believes, that we can play a key role in developing regional energy programs that create economic value for our region. Our efforts led us quickly into partnership with local municipalities, and while discussions with those communities and counties that overlap our service area began prior to the passage of AB 117, it was the passage of that law in 2002 that really put us on, put us on the path that we find ourselves on today. Our district clearly had a number of options going forward. We own and operate a hydro plant. We have subsequently constructed and own and operate a gas-fired peaking facility. There were options to take several different paths to address these issues, but our board's commitment to add value and commit our, and continue our reputation as a strong collaborative regional resource manager led us to community choice. This was based in part on IOU support of customer choice as set forth in AB 117. The investor-owned utilities participated in the legislative process in front of the Public Utilities Commission, and at several meetings that we've held with the JPA members over the last number of years have expressed positions of neutrality or support, certainly not opposition, as we moved forward. Our overall objectives are consistent with those of the legislature when they passed AB 117. That was to spur investment in the California electrical system, to create customer competition, and to provide for a level of local involvement through city and county government in energy planning and certain pricing of your energy supplies. As Mr. Haddix reported, in 2004, 13 municipalities signed a memorandum of understanding to explore the feasibility of community choice for their service area. We subsequently prepared a feasibility report and financial model, which was subjected to independent peer review and presented individually to the staff and governing bodies for each of those MOU partners in 2005. All 13 of those partners then elected to move forward with the preparation of the implementation plan that was to be filed with the Public Utilities Commission. Again, those efforts concluded with presentations in front of each of those governing bodies last fall, and again, all 13 municipalities took action to create the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, which in turn authorized the filing of the implementation plan in January of 2007. That plan was submitted to the Public Utility Commission on January 29th. The commission requested comments from the investor-owned utilities, which were filed on March 12th, and we are presently reviewing those comments. We've had at least two meetings with staff from the investor-owned utilities and anticipate continued discussions and amendment or modification to our implementation plan to respond to some of those comments. So we believe we're working together with the utilities to come up with a plan that makes sense. Our team continues to grow. As was reported, we've worked closely with Navigant Consulting, an established consultant on California energy matters, over the past several years to first evaluate the alternatives and ultimately develop the proposed implementation plan. More recently, we have added Citigroup Corporate and Investment Banking and Citigroup Energy with the full backing of their parent company, Citigroup, to develop a full supply energy contract for the program during the first several years as we work towards construction of the power plant. We are currently negotiating a series of agreements with Citigroup to fulfill that Again, as Brian reported, last November, your staff approached us and asked us to consider the terms of joining the current effort through membership in the Joint Powers Authority. We set forth a path that your board embraced in December by authorizing action and money to conduct this additional feasibility analysis. The intent was to give you data that would allow you to make an informed business decision as well as to give the current JPA members information to determine whether or not there was a positive or negative impact on the original joint power service area by adding load represented by the Tulare County service area. Frankly, we had hoped to complete that study earlier, but due to delays in obtaining necessary customer use data, we aren't finished. A draft of the report should be available by the end of the week. However, we have been able to develop an overview of the energy demand and customer distribution for your service area. That data was presented to the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority Board last month, at which your staff were present. In advance of that presentation to the authority board, I reported that it was our intent to present final feasibility to you for review and processing and wait for you to initiate a request to the authority board for terms of membership, and that's where we find ourselves today. Under the JPA, the JPA board is to establish terms of membership for additional members. Now, I would like to just very briefly walk you through the handout that we distributed here, which is, in fact, the PowerPoint presentation given to the authority board members last week. You can see on the first-page overview that it's really aimed at communicating or setting up the communication with the authority board member, but some interesting demographics for you to be aware of at this point. Page two shows that your total service area is covered eighty percent by Southern California Edison, twenty percent by PG&E. Look the page, you can see that you represent, or your service area includes about 66,000 customers and approximately 1,185 gigawatt-hours per year of delivery or energy usage. Agriculture representing about forty-seven percent of that total usage number. Comparatively, that is about twenty percent of the current load represented by the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, so you would be a substantial member of the authority were you to elect to join. The, the impact on the authority, you can see the next page shows the authority load mix currently with the 13 members. We currently represent 92% PG&E customers, eight percent potential Edison customers. With the Tulare County membership, the Edison participation grows to as much as 23%. And again, you can see the significant increase, or shift if you will, from current authority customer mix of six percent agriculture to 15% agricultural growth if Tulare County were to join. Finally, the last page shows, again, some very preliminary financial impact numbers, and it is our intent to bring these to a much more defined conclusion in the feasibility report that will be filed with you, your staff, by the end of this week. The key points here are that valuing your participation in the program can be done in various ways, and final analysis is subject to rules placed upon the membership by the authority board in the concurrence of our analysis by Citigroup Energy, who would be asked to incorporate that additional 1,185 annual gigawatt-hours into their agreement, their commitments to serve the region. We've asked Citigroup to review this data. They are processing a response, and we would incorporate that into the feasibility report that we file with you. The initial analysis indicates that depending upon final agreement with Citigroup Energy, the rate of customer opt-outs within your service area and other variables adding your loads to the authority is a net financial gain for both the authority and the Tulare County customers. And based on our preliminary estimates that continue to be substantiated day by day, that we think we can negotiate agreements for reduced energy generation costs at rates five percent below current tariffs established by the investor-owned utilities, your first three-year savings would be approximately $11 million for the service area. Now, just a couple of additional comments. The authority intends to begin community choice deliveries by this November and phasing in customer classes over the subsequent 12-month period. Your staff has asked us to move expeditiously so that you might be able to participate in that initial timeline. If you choose to move forward with this schedule, you must take several steps to establish membership in the authority and ultimately be included in the implementation plan, and Mr. Haddix outlined that for you earlier. First, you must ask the authority for terms of membership. We would propose that that be done by resolution next Tuesday, and we are prepared to have the authority take action two days later, on April 12th, to establish those terms. We would then present those back to your staff and your board on April 17th for you to consider, and if you elect to move forward, you would be asked to pass a resolution stating your intent to join the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority and your intent to become an applicant in front of the Public Utilities Commission for community choice as a member of that authority. Third, and this is something I think is important to recognize, is that your decision to move forward on April 17th is not a binding forever commitment. It only gets you a place at the table. And like the other 13 municipalities who are members of the authority, you will have a final decision in May or June to elect to move forward and provide your customers with the opportunity to acquire energy by choice, or you can withdraw from the Joint Powers Authority with your only investment being the amount that you've spent to get us to this point, the $20,500, and whatever terms that are established by the JPA for your initial buy-in into that organization. I want to thank you for your interest in the program. I guess one other comment. It's important to recognize, as has been laid out here, we've been working on this for four or five years, and you've asked us to give you an accelerated schedule, but I'm asking you to make some tough decisions in a series of just a handful of months. We think there's great opportunity for Tulare County to join the program, great economic benefit that would promote that decision. However, this isn't the only bite at the apple. If you're uncomfortable with moving forward at this point in time, I don't want us to lead you to believe that we're only here once. The program is set up to allow additional members to join subsequently down the road. There are some additional steps that have to be taken with the Public Utilities Commission to amend or modify the plan for further members regardless of when people join. So that's an important point that I want to make sure you understand. Finally, I'd like to thank you for your interest in the program. We continue to believe that the opportunity for substantial economic development for the region is real through the way that we've structured this program, and I stand ready to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Just a quick one. It's probably pretty obvious to me, but when we say Tulare County, we're speaking only of the unincorporated areas or residents of the county. It wouldn't include any of the city.
That is correct. None of the incorporated cities are included in these numbers.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Dave. I appreciate the information. The one thing I was, I guess, sort of a bottom-line question is, and I understand when you began the process, it may have been motivated more by the issue of dependability of power supplies. But as you move through a process, the time goes on, I'd have to think that the financial rise may be even to a higher level. And my question, kind of, from a general standpoint, is what in the world would motivate KRCD to enter into this minefield of the most highly-regulated industry probably in the world? Because, and I say that somewhat facetiously, but frankly, it had to be a scary prospect of trying to wade into something like this, and now you've gone quite a ways into it, which gives us a bit of an advantage of kind of coming in at the late hour here to find out how things are progressing. And another way of asking the question is, I understand industrial-owned municipal, or industrial utility companies operate on a profit margin for shareholders. Is KRCD going to profit from this? Are they trying to make money from this process? Is that part of the motivation for doing this? I know that you, you generate power from your hydro project, you're generating revenue for the districts, which helps to reduce their cost of providing services. Is there something similar to that in this?
The, just a couple of general statements in response to your questions. First of all, what motivated the district to do this is that we believe, as a public agency, we're uniquely positioned to make investments in local capacity. It was the vision and the leadership of our board in the 1980s that led to the construction of the Pine Flat Hydro Facility at the face of Pine Flat Dam when several previous attempts had failed. And that power provides a critical resource into the area and is paid for by the State of California. More recently, we were asked by the State of California to make investments in local peaking capacity through assets that they acquired in a Williams Energy Settlement, and we became an owner-operator of a gas-fired peaking facility. The contract for the peaking generation is cost of service. There is no profit component to the district. As a public agency, we don't operate on a profit component. We do have a very small piece of overhead that we are able to allocate back to that project that helps us cover my-staff costs and other indirect components. The hydro plant has a very reasonable and nominal generation benefit charge that we acquire and invest back, as you've pointed out, in the local community, primarily in the area of flood control and groundwater resource management and water quality monitoring. So it's money that we use as part of our broader resource management responsibilities. Again, I think, from our perspective, the legislature created us in 1951 with a broad set of legislative powers and authorities, and one of those powers was the ability to develop and develop energy assets and sell them both wholesale and retail. We believe that that creates a unique position for us to make investments in the region. We are paving new ground here with community choice, but we think it fits very well with the legislative and district mandate that's before us.
Well, let's move to Southern Cal Edison. Bill?
Chairman Ashida, supervisors and staff, thank you for convening this meeting. This is, I think, an opportunity for just a real good discussion on what's a very, very important concept. I have two colleagues with me this morning that I would like to introduce. Mr. Charlie Wilson, Director in our Public Affairs Department with Southern California Edison Company, and Mr. Jim Navarette, Project Manager for the Implementation of Community Choice Aggregation. Mr. Navarette has been engaged in some of the meetings that have been described earlier this morning by Mr. Haddix and Mr. Orth. You have in your package those comments that were submitted to San Joaquin Valley Power Authority and, of course, the California Public Utilities Commission. Included, was distributed this morning, is a short overview provided by Southern California Edison on the concept of community choice. Edison on the concept of community choice aggregation. And at this point, we'd be very, very happy to engage and answer your questions. And Charlie, I'd like to invite you.
If I could, good morning and thank you. I apologize for us being a little bit tardy. Seemingly kept being redirected to your jail, and I'm not sure what that means.
It's an out-pass code, isn't it?
But it was a lovely facility. He treated us very well.
Were you with Thorburn?
I thank you. My name is Charlie Wilson. I work, actually, in our Rosemead corporate headquarters and have been dealing with the issues of communities looking at the various energy options to them over the last 10 years or so. And what I have for you today, just some brief overview remarks, and then you've got in your package a presentation. I'll point to just a couple of slides there, not to walk you through those in detail. But I think, as the chairman appropriately pointed out, this is a highly complex issue, and while some may look for very easy answers or, you know, sort of marketing types of slogans, I think you are well advised to go through in great detail to understand the utility business, what it is and what it is you're really being asked to do, so that you, at the end of the day, as policymakers, can make appropriate, informed decisions that are within your risk tolerance as a government entity. I can tell you that from basics, Southern California Edison really is here as an advisor. We think we have, with 110 years of experience in the utility business, probably a few lessons that we have learned. And as was indicated earlier, the crisis of a few years ago was a very good learning experience, and I think there are some things that we can help you with in that. I think the issue really is one of kind of overview, is what role do you really want to play as a public institution? In the charts that you have, and I'll point to our Slide 2, what you're really getting into with community choice aggregation, by all measures, is you're really getting into the business of being a power provider. You will be, through community choice aggregation, get into the business of wholesale power procurement. Not that it's a horribly scary tactic, but that is the energy crisis. That is what caused the energy crisis, was the wholesale power market and the volatility California energy market. And while the legislature has gone through a number of measures since then to try to stabilize the California marketplace, it is inherently a volatile business, principally based upon natural gas pricing, which I'll get to here in a little bit later. So it is important to understand what you are being asked to do, what you would like to do, and what the real role is here. I can also share with you, in the comment that was made earlier, relative to whether or not this is a money-making venture, either for the public institution or from your investor in utility, I can tell you, from a wholesale power standpoint, Southern California Edison makes no money on wholesale power. Those are contracts that we enter into. Those are transparent with the Public Utility Commission. Those are straight pass-through costs that go into the rates that your customers pay, our customers pay. So in terms of profitability, if you're looking at the wholesale portion of the marketplace, it would be really important to understand what that wholesale market looks like, what the margins are, and what the risks are within the wholesale side. But as you can see from this chart that I've got before you, what you'll be doing is being in the business of buying power, buying bulk power as an entity, as a joint powers authority. And if there is competition in the marketplace, the competition really is to purchase the lowest-cost wholesale power on the marketplace. So in terms of competition, you don't compete directly with Edison or PG&E in that regard, other than we're all looking for the lowest-cost wholesale energy to provide to our customers, and so we'll all be participating in that same wholesale marketplace unless you own your own generation, in which case you would be taking that generation at whatever cost it is to produce. So that's what I raise with you here. Southern California Edison, in this case, and PG&E as well, we would still continue to serve as a full-service utility provider, absent the generation component, still flows through our wires. We become your transportation company. We meter it, we bill it, we do all of the things we do today, other than buying the bulk power. If I then can take you just shortly, I mean, I find it interesting, as we do a little bit of sort of historical return, for those that may recall back when we went through deregulation in its very infancy, the issue of direct access and part of direct access was also in how to aggregate customers. A number of local government agencies did attempt to do that under different rules at the time that the legislature put together. Your neighbors to the north with ABAG was a good example of that. SandEG, the San Diego Association of Governments, and the city of Palm Springs went through an attempted aggregated buying pool at the time. And because of the negative experience each of them had in that, part of the authorizing legislation has now created this new opportunity in AB 117, tried to go through and tried to minimize the opportunities for marketers to take advantage of customers in California, and they think they've done a pretty good job with that. But we've sort of come back to the issue of whether or not aggregating large blocks of customers makes economic sense, and that's really kind of what we're after here. The principal change that I'll tell you in the new legislation is this opt-out provision. And I'm going to use Palm Springs as a point of familiarity, as I went through that, and with some pain in the Palm Springs community. The old program was an opt-in, where you would purchase, you would go out and actually have to market to your customers, and they would have to choose you or opt into your power pool. The legislation here changed that. So by proxy of your activity and your jurisdictional authority now, all customers in your geographic confines actually would be a part of your pool, and they would have to opt out. There's a fundamental difference in your ability to have to market, and so that's a positive to your side. In the Palm Springs case, they partnered with the now infamous Enron and had to market themselves in their program, and they never quite got themselves to a break-even point. And that was just one of those minor cases where their contractor in Enron actually walked away, leaving about 2,500 customers holding the bag and returning back to Southern California Edison for service. And the transition there was not as smooth as we would have liked, and that's part of why we're going through these education efforts here, is to minimize potential impacts on any customer for either party. It's not in either of our interests for somebody to be disjointed. But as I said, we take care of everything else. On page, and I'm going to skip forward, there's a lot of requirements that are in, which I will not even come close to attempting to go through that, but the Public Utility Commission, the legislature, went through and tried to create as level a playing field as possible, so that if you get into this particular activity, you'd be subjected to the same rules and requirements essentially that the investor-owned utilities go through. And that is for resource mix, that's for all kinds of different sorts of things, and principally today, because it's in the news a lot, as the state goes into its AB 32 requirements, that is a significant new element that all load-serving entities, anybody who provides power in the state of California, would have to adhere to. That is just one new major, and frankly, a question mark as to how we will all deal with that. How far out will natural gas plants go? To what extent do you have to have renewable portfolios? The same 20% requirement that we have to provide renewable power would be your obligation as well. Those kinds of technical things, you want to make sure you really capture what those all are, and that the JPA be able, to your satisfaction, help you address how you're going to obtain those particular goals and meet those requirements, whether it's from the state or from the Public Utility Commission. And if you want additional follow-up on a detail, we can do that other than Q and A, or we'd be happy to follow up on some more specifics should you have them. If I could direct you though to Slide Number 6. As I indicated before, the issue for you really is a value equation and your risk tolerance. If you can go through what we tried to simplify here as a formula, then you make the call. If it's within your risk tolerance and you think it's something that would be of significant benefit by all means, then that's the kind of approach you want to take. Again, we want to help you go through that process and understand what those costs, those responsibilities are. On the next page, this is just a different way of sort of showing you what the responsibilities are. Please understand what you're doing is just a very small portion of the utility bill under a community choice aggregation scenario, and we've tried to help you list, even within the wholesale market, there's a number of requirements, and it's quite complex, as you indicated. It is very similar to water. The difference being, you can store water. Electricity is instantaneous, so you buy and trade it literally on a second-by-second basis, and so that's what helps make it a little bit more complicated. On Page 8, we try to provide for, Page 9, that's pretty good. Here's Page 8. In terms of how to establish or the kinds of things we think you might want to consider, we try to outline those for you here. In terms of, and you're going through that with the JPA, the feasibility studies, do a detailed power supply plan. I think that would be the one real request that I would suggest to you, is that you get firm plans in place, actually have to go out and price. Can a JPA, can an aggregated buying pool compete with the large existing entities, whether it be the Department of Water and Power, Edison, PG&E, whoever is in the California market purchasing, particularly on the renewable side, because as of today, we all have a requirement, nobody's meeting the 20% requirement. We're all working real hard to get there. So if you do a detailed power supply plan, it would have to include a 20% renewable portfolio mix in a given timeframe, and that would be important to get physical pricing estimates on which you can make a sound judgment. And then we talked a little bit about the natural gas market, and that's where I will go to the next slide. Really, the price volatility in wholesale power runs across the natural gas market, and you can see just over the last year and a half to two years what the natural gas market has done, is it continues to be highly volatile, and if I were good at predicting these sorts of things, you know, I wouldn't be sitting in this job. We'd be making a lot more money someplace else. So that is an unknown, and trying to understand that as best you can is important. The other option is, what you would pay for would be guaranteed contracts, and again, that goes back to trying to get a firm price for wholesale power delivery. But that's just one of those elements that nobody can control, and as the market goes, if all of you have insight into natural gas pricing, that much better. That'd be very helpful. I would then take you to the next slide, just in terms of resource mix. This is just a representative sampling, as I indicated, with the new renewable portfolio standards, kind of where various utilities, both public and private in California, stand today. You can see within the public entities in LAWP, IID, Anaheim Riverside, Pasadena cases, those are predominantly in the South, those folks all have very significant coal, which allows them very cheap, the cheapest form of generation. Those percentages will close over the next few years because of California's now restriction in new coal contracts. You are no longer allowed to buy coal contracts and even import it into the state. So those gaps will close. That will put cost pressures on those public entities to raise rates. You can see in SMUDS case, it's a bit different in terms of what their mixture is. But what you're really looking for here, in the same way you go through your financial or your investment portfolio, what you're really trying to get to at the end of the day is a diversified portfolio that will hedge you against that natural gas price volatility. And so if I had other recommendation, I would suggest you look at that kind of mixture and not tie yourself to any single form of generation over another, because that makes you rather suspect and it makes you rather vulnerable to pricing swings. By way of a simple summary, again, we're here to help you evaluate proposals. As the studies come forward, we would be happy, and Mr. Navarette does a very good job with his technical team in combing through the various details and matching them against the requirements, and if there are questions or gaps or areas that we think you might want to go back and ask more questions or consider, we would be happy to do that. Other than that, we are here to help you answer questions. It is, as I say, it's a complex issue, and the more information you have, the better you can be at making a sound choice for your constituency, and we thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Are you done?
Yes.
Craig?
Good afternoon now, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and share our also 100 years of knowledge with you so that you have the opportunity to make informed and logical judgments based on the information that was provided to you. I'm not going to go into details. Our colleagues from the South did, as always, an excellent job in going through the finer points of what you will be facing. We have those exact same concerns, going through and crunching the numbers. We have a team of folks, as do they, that, this is their job, this is what they do day in and day out, is analyze this type of information. With me today is David Rubin, who's the Director of that team, who has come down here to offer his assistance. If you have technical questions, which if you get past the first page, I have trouble with. Being that, we have additional concerns that I don't think has been addressed yet today, and that is the plant itself, the 500-megawatt plant that's being proposed, we have some concerns about it as air quality issues. We would, our own company has concerns about building plants in the valley. We do have peaker plants. We think those are adequate to meet the demand, particularly during the summer months. We don't believe, particularly in our air basin, that this is the best use, generating energy in the valley from natural gas burning facilities. We do have some concerns there. And really, that's it. We're here to answer questions. I know all of you have the comments on the proposal that has been circulated, so if you have any questions based on that or other, please feel free to ask.
I guess I have some sort of general thoughts that go through my mind. I remember years ago, when I was in the practice of law, and I went to work for a firm that had been in existence for a long period of time, and they had a lot of antiquated equipment and machinery and so forth, and when the time came to me to decide, do I want to stay there and inherit this, or do I want to start fresh, I opted for fresh. My point there is that, are there benefits in beginning fresh from the standpoint of building a power plant with the state-of-the-art type of construction and so forth, and the power generation and energy efficiencies that helped offset some of the other obvious benefits of legacy power generated by hydro projects that have been in existence for a long time? And yet, I remember back some years, and I don't know how much of those are still in effect, but the long-term contracts that were purchased at very high prices by the governor of California, and I don't know how much our industrial utilities are still bound by those contracts, how much longer they have to run. And so you have a history here, it seems like in the industrial side, where you have all of this background of hydro plants have been in existence for a long time, nuclear plants have been in existence for a long time, long-term contracts, short-term contracts. When you start off fresh, you start off, it's probably a hindrance and it's a benefit. And I guess that's, trying to weigh that or measure that in a situation, seems to me has some, because when it comes right down to it, we're talking about dollars and cents. Can a new player do what they propose to do, which is result in a 5% savings to Schumer, because of some of these dynamics that all play into the process? And I see, you know, looking at, you know, Mr. Rubin probably responded to that, because looking at their information they gave us, they raised some real concerns about whether or not that is possible.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Supervisor. My name is David Rubin with PG&E. Let me address the several points that you included in your question. First and foremost, our concerns are around the way that the reliability of supply in the greater Fresno area is portrayed, which leads to the proposal to put in a 500-megawatt power plant as part of the solution. We don't believe, and we are planning furiously to ensure, that there is no gap in the ability to be able to make sure that we can satisfy demand in the greater Fresno area. And we've seen some material that we believe misrepresents the case. We are, again, constructing facilities, as we have been for the last number of years, largely transmission-related facilities as well as substations, which is all part of the electrical hardware to provide supply, and contracting with generators to make sure that, in fact, we can satisfy the growing load in this area. So from our perspective, the 500-megawatt power plant, which, as we understand, would be a new state-of-the-art combined-cycle plant, which is very efficient, isn't necessary in order to address any particular reliability issue in this area. So looking at it then, just strictly on its economic terms, again, it is, as we understand, an effect an efficient new modern class combined cycle plant. The question though is whether in fact it would be able to generate power less expensively than the resources that are part of PG&E's and Edison's mix, which as Mr. Wilson showed is comprised of, again, a portfolio of different types of generation types, including nuclear, including hydro, and then natural gas to the degree of about half of the total portfolio, and then renewables as we're required to satisfy the 20% requirement by 2010. So in order to make the determination, is the cost of a new natural gas combined cycle plant comparable to less than or greater than that portfolio? You have to obviously run some detailed calculations, which we've done, and based on the information that we've seen presented in the implementation plan, we believe the cost estimates are low relative to what a new modern combined cycle plant would cost to install and then to operate, along with the rest of the portfolio that would need to be assembled by KRCD and the JPA in order to meet load. So the information that we have developed shows what we believe to be a more realistic reflection of the total costs, which we don't believe hold a lot of promise for lowering the cost to consumers in this area. And we've developed these numbers both internally, along with an outside consultant that does this work on a regular basis, Global Energy Decisions from Sacramento. So our major concerns again are, if you want to move ahead with this proposal, and as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Worth and others, PG&E supported the bill that put community choice aggregation into place. It was AB 117 in 2002, and we've worked through the PUC process, and we do work closely with communities that are looking at CCA. At the same time, we feel duty-bound to make sure that if communities or customers are moving ahead and selecting CCA, that they do so based on realistic information about the potential either savings opportunities or additional costs. And based on what we've been able to at least ascertain from the implementation plan, we believe that costs would be higher. So getting back to your original point about sweeping aside the old and moving in with the new, the proposed power plant that KRCD is looking at, again, would be a new modern class facility. The question is, as Mr. Wilson had mentioned, based on the fact that it's based on natural gas, and that the rest of the portfolio, with the exception of the 20% renewable requirement that KRCD would be required to satisfy, would most likely be based on natural gas as well. There really aren't that many other new resources being brought into play in California. Coal is no longer an option. So you're going to have a portfolio that is very heavily weighted toward natural gas, and that introduces a lot more cost variability. Again, this was covered by Edison. So you do need to look carefully, not just simply a question of whether it's old or new, but what are the cost characteristics of the different elements of the portfolio.
I would also add, Mr. Supervisor, I think you characterize it correctly in that what you're really doing here, and although you've been involved for about four years in terms of startup, really talking about a startup company. And the utility business is capital-intensive, and so to do power plants, there's a reason why there are a few in the state and why you don't see a lot of small companies start up. It's something, once you're in, you're in for the very long haul. It's not a business you just get in and out of if, you know, next year it doesn't feel good. So, and all of that can be done contractually, but those are the kinds of considerations that you'd want to make sure. There are certain advantages certainly to public financing, but I think that becomes part of your, again, your risk tolerance financially, is how much, and will the plant come online, and what, where's the bulk of that power go, and what do you do with the excess, and can it really operate profitably, and over what period of time before that plant actually turns a profit? And those are the kinds of decisions we deal with every day, and that's what we go through with our, whether or not we build a plant, we no longer own a plant, although it seems like California's going to push us back in that direction. All of the new generation really that we're out looking to acquire is renewable at this point. And as I indicated, that renewable requirement is going to be very challenging. You'll see in the matrix I gave you today, we're at 16% today for Southern California Edison. We are the single largest purchaser of renewable power in the United States. And every year, we've gone from 18% to 17% to 16%, while adding new contracts. And so as your population, your customer growth continues to move, it is a moving target. And we're actually in a position today where we're signing contracts and building transmission facilities to renewable projects that do not yet exist, and we're actually banking that they will come online, and that's part of our risk portfolio. That is what we do.
Menure renewable?
Very much so.
They have a lot of them.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I hardly think we're a startup company. I guess I would encourage the board as we move forward to consider the experience of the district in local invested assets and resource management, not just energy, but across all gamuts of resource management. And the team that we have assembled is not to be ignored. Citigroup is the nation's largest financial institution, and they believe in this project. I think the legislature established a view or a vision that challenged us to think about a new way, getting out of the box and determining whether or not there are different ways that we could spur investment in California to supplement what the investor-owned utilities have traditionally done, as they've both represented for over a century. We believe that we will ultimately present to you, or the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority members, a program that effectively manages the risk and provides economic benefit for the region. And if we can't, we don't proceed. If we can, then we think we've met what the legislature asked us to do. Second thing I would suggest that you do as we move forward is to seriously look at the question of system capacity. I've understood from saying the reliability word too many times that that's an issue that the utilities take exception with, and I'm not going to question that they aren't doing a good job in planning for future resource reliability as this area continues to rapidly grow. However, we believe that there's a good mix of their transmission and peaking capacity investments with base load investments in the region. And in a PG&E publication that just came out, the forecast from the independent system operator this summer is, given normal summer weather, we face only a 3% likelihood of stage three alert or rolling blackouts. And the question that we have to ask ourselves from a policy perspective, is that good enough? I've been in the water business for 20 years, and I know that the general view towards resource management in the state is conserve, 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 demand management. And I don't think that's where we want to be. I think as a public agency, we believe that investing in local base load assets and spurring investments in renewables through a different business plan can supplement what they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, Dave, could you respond to the question raised about air quality and then about the building of the plan and how, what, you know, obviously this is something you'd have to go through the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for approvals as well, but beyond that, what about this CO2 emissions factor? Is that a moving target? Is that taken into your calculation?
Well, as mentioned earlier, AB 32 does present some additional questions and challenges that have to be addressed. We believe that the starting point for us is a good one, and that is that the standard for greenhouse gas emission was that you have to be at least as clean as the current technology of gas-fired base load. So what we are proposing to build is the threshold against which all other greenhouse gas emitters or carbon emitters will be held accountable to.
Is that best available control?
I believe so. From a broader air quality perspective, the plant that we will construct will meet the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and federal standards for air quality. Now, your board's probably aware that that means that you acquire emission reduction credits in amounts greater than what are contributed to by that source of new emissions. We are currently working on a regional strategy where we acquire new emission credits from existing technologies so that we can show the region, again, as a region resource manager, that we've improved their quality. This is not a standard that the Air Pollution Control District holds you to. You can build a peaking plant in Fresno and acquire emission reduction credits from Tracy or Kern County with no physical connection whatsoever. We're committed to try to take that to the next level and show we have improved air quality in the region.
I have a question. David, now this new plant is 500 megawatts, and your hydro plant is how many megawatts?
The hydro plant has got a faceplate rating of 165 megawatts.
Question leads up to my leading question is, are you going to be, is the authority going to need to buy power on the open market to supplement peak needs?
Yes. The resource plan that's set forth in the implementation plan recognizes that we will secure the program with the construction and operation of the base load facility, and it's actually a nominally sized 565 megawatts, so it's a little over 500 megawatts, depending on what type of technology you use to secure the turbine generator set. But the overall load of the current 13 members is, got a peak of 1,400 megawatts. So we will be buying capacity or energy in those time periods where the region's deliveries exceed the base load plant operational output or the economic dispatch of that plant. There may be times where the plant doesn't dispatch economically, that we're going to be buying all of the power served during a timeframe from the open market. Now, again, as I reported earlier in my comments, the implementation plan indicated our intent to secure a provider for full requirement energy supply from startup, November of '07, until 2010, when the plant comes online, and then beyond that, acquire energy through energy suppliers to supplement what the base load can do. We've secured a relationship with Citigroup and Citigroup Energy, one of their subsidiaries, to provide that full requirement energy supply beginning November of '07, and running out to plant startup and possibly even beyond, to provide the program with some stability and predictability of rates during, you know, a sizable startup period.
I have a question to PG&E or Southern Cal Edison. We know that electricity is going to be transmitted on your lines. PUC regulates your rates that you charge for the transmission?
Yes, sir. Everything that we do, all the pricing of an investor-owned utility is predicated on authorization from the Public Utility Commission. We go through every three to five years rate cases, and they, it's like a giant legal case, they comb through every aspect of our operation, and they authorize what we can charge for what service.
On billing, or who's going to do the billing?
The investor-owned utilities under the law will continue to bill for community choice aggregation program costs.
That's also controlled.
And that's also through, yeah. And what would happen there is that we would go through, because we already have all of that infrastructure in place, we would go through and do all the same normal things, and then just on the bill itself, when you get to the commodity charge itself, that's whatever rate you determine it to be, and we just insert that into the bill.
Let me clarify, I think I heard you ask, is that generation component established by this board or the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority Board subject to PUC approval? The answer to that is no. The Public Utility Commission will not regulate the setting of generation rates by the local community choice aggregator. That is a decision that's made at the local level.
I don't know whether it's a question or it's probably some rambling thing, which is what I've been doing all morning, so I'm going to apologize to all of you that weren't here to hear me ramble earlier this morning. I think, you know, in my mind, it's, I'm trying to make an informed decision on what's going to be best for my constituents and not myself, which is an interesting dynamic because I would not be in the service area. I live in a city, which is, I think, most of us do here, except perhaps you, Supervisor Sheehan. Oh, that's right, Mr. Worthley. Your plantation is also not within a city boundary, so maybe it's even weighing heavier in your mind. And I think I understand that this, the power authorities is going whether we go or not, but when I look at the numbers, it would appear, at your numbers, it would appear that, you know, we might be a valuable member of your group. So I appreciate all the information we're getting today. I'm going, in my mind, I'm back to this renewable fuels, and I get fixated with this simply because in my particular area of the county, there's a lot of renewable fuel. And I know that currently, I can use my son, for example, who has mountains of this renewable fuel, which he actually uses, and calls me on occasion and says, Mom, the needle's running backwards, it's so exciting. But they produce so much that, you know, it goes somewhere, but I don't know where it's going and who's getting the benefit of that. So I guess I'm asking everybody, because I know of the rules and regulations that you have to, you know, have this new green fuel or, yeah, whatever it is, does that enter into consideration by any of you here? I mean, how, will that be part of your projections on the savings or whatever? And should that become a reality for the others, would that be reflected in rate reductions somehow in your world also? Because, you know, part of what, the initial decision to base on this is that this is going to save money, not for you in particular, but a rate reduction of somewhat. And arguably, there's, yeah, well, it might, but then it might not. So wow, I don't know. Was there a question in there?
Well, I'm sure both of us are going to want to speak at least a little bit to the renewable component of this a little bit further. It has been represented to you correctly that 20% of the load that we serve, just like they will ultimately be held accountable to, has to come from a renewable source by, I think it's 2012, 2010, thank you. Now initially, we intend to meet that through a series of contracts, but again, our regional strategy is, as a resource management agency, is to leverage the program such that we can make investments in local renewable capacity. We have unsolicited proposals north of 50 megawatts already of technically viable, economically affordable, and when I say that, they fit our financial model that allowed us to forecast the rate forecast. It's higher cost than the other alternatives, but it fits the financial model for new investments of renewable technology in the valley. And again, we think that is a good supplement and support to what's going on with the investor-owned The economic equation might be different for us versus them, which might spur some additional investments that we would make that they wouldn't. Again, I think tax-exempt financing creates a little bit of an advantage for us. It's not sizable, but it may be enough to cross over that build or not build or support not support point. There are still issues in terms of wheeling and credit and who, you know, where the power goes and who benefits from it, and the whole renewable market is still in a great state of flux. But we think long-term that this program can be the platform to make significant investments in the region in renewable energy strategy, or renewable energy capacity.
Is there a question in there for anybody else?
I thought I heard a question. I'll answer the question I thought I heard. It's also an integral part of our mix as well. We have a number of programs geared toward brown power, cow power, where, as you described, either customers can take the manure, put it into a biodigester, and then generate electricity, and then actually have the electricity generated from that particular unit supply effectively power to other loads at the same dairy location, for example. We are also, we just recently got approval from the California Public Utilities Commission to buy power directly from generators using biogas and other types of renewable fuels. And then we've recently instituted a program where we're actually buying the gas that is produced from the digestion of manure, so a number of different ways in which we can take advantage of the fuel.
I would answer it this way, because I'm a fairly simple individual, and if they can explain it to me, usually can get it pretty well, or take it to others.
That will probably work for me also, sir.
If you're looking in the financial sheets that I have seen, you're talking about roughly seven cents, give or take, for wholesale generation, that's the pasture I spoke to earlier. What you're being proposed and what I guess your benchmark would be is that can you build a new power plant with? can you build a new power plant with public money? Can you get to the renewable requirement and come in at less than seven cents? In the case here, it's 5% less. That's the margin, that's the target that you're looking for. And the question is, does the technology exist? Do the, and there is an abundance of methane here, and there's certainly fuel to do that. Depends on the technology and depends on the cost to produce out of that technology. And that's the kind of devil in the detail you want to make real sure that you've got down. I can tell you from our experience in the south and down there, particularly in areas like Coachella Valley, it's all about solar. Gee, it's free. Can't we just put in solar and we'll all live happily ever after? And the issue, and there's a real fundamental difference between those that try to put in photovoltaics on their home, small units, versus what we have found is very large fields or large projects. In this particular business, because of the capital intensity, it has been shown generally size matters in terms of getting an order of magnitude. And so that is why we have contracted with a very large solar field in the high desert, and that gets a cost per kilowatt hour down roughly to what it costs for natural gas versus the experience that those that would purchase photovoltaics for their home that have a very high cost, and they do it for other reasons, and they get put in your mortgage. So it depends on the technology that you use, and that's just one of those areas you just want to make sure that you've got penciled out.
I have a question. David, on capital risk to build this plant or more plants, is that going to require a capital investment or, and/or capital liability to the partners in this?
In short, no. The financial component of this program is structured as follows. KRCD has agreed to be the agent or the energy service provider, if you will, to the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority. And therefore, the district will be the issuer of the debt to secure the energy, both through contracts or through capital investment necessary to meet our commitments to be your energy provider. We've had extensive discussions with Citigroup about this structure. The security for that capital debt is the power purchase agreements that we will execute between the district and the power authority, and the power authority in turn with each of its individual members. So as long as those contracts are in place, we have a revenue stream to service the debt. The possibility exists, and this is where the investment banking community and we are working together now, that if those contracts unravel, the question is, who's responsible to repay the debt? It's not the customer, it's not the communities, it becomes the bondholder who's ultimately the risk. We will, and we have proposed a exit fee, if you will, for a customer who opts in and then, or elects not to opt out, and then ultimately somewhere down the road opts out. But that exit fee structure is proposed to be identical to what the investor-owned utilities use, so that it's a calculation that is understandable and can be, to some degree, estimated going in to the program. But the basic answer to your question is that the debt becomes a burden of KRCD and ultimately the bondholders, and their security is the district, whatever underlying credit arrangements we can negotiate with the underwriters, and ultimately the value of the asset or the contracts that we have themselves.
Another question I have is the credit. What amounts of money do you foresee that you're going to need as working capital to contract in advance for power?
The implementation plan that's been filed with the Public Utilities Commission contemplates working capital somewhere in the range of $50 million. That's just to maintain day liquidity. That's highly dynamic, depending on where market prices are going to go, what are the terms of payment that are established by the energy provider themselves. But in a round number, we've used a $50 million working capital fund as the target.
Who's going to broker the purchase of power?
The current relationship with Citigroup Energy would have that we enter into an agreement with Citigroup, and they become the full energy service provider. So they're going to go out and through the assets that they own and can, or the assets that they can contract for, secure the necessary power in conformance with California law to meet program needs.
I don't really, I don't really have a question, but I, I'm, before we finish, I know. I know, I know that you had some board members here that, you know, are already on board and have probably given it considerable thought. I just wanted if either one of them wanted to say something to us.
I think Davis represented it quite well. Or didn't envision to try to go out in any way, shape, and form to eliminate our utility companies that presently exist. They did this as a reliability issue and a cost-saving issue, plain and simple, no different than what we've represented here today. I don't believe that there's been, excuse me, I guess there was one dissenting vote as we went through the 13 counties and cities, and that was, gave us some real confidence that what we initially set out to do was the right thing. Because now it's not only our seven-person board that was convinced this is a good decision, it is now the boards of 13 others that also was convinced this was a good decision to go forward. Davis pointed out very well today that if there's some point in the future that we see something, and I saw nothing here today that made me think any different, but if there is something in the future that we see that doesn't enable us to accomplish that mission, reliability and savings, then we will, by all means, hold up our hand and say we were wrong, and we needed to take a step back and take another look, do something else. But there's been nothing to this point that would point in that direction. The concerns today are all very, very valid concerns, but there's nothing I haven't heard already, there's nothing we haven't thought about, there's nothing we aren't, either have the answer to or are working on the answer for. And I think that regionally-wise, this is a very good thing for everybody, and I think it will be successful. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
That's, thank you.
Thank you. I understand that the fuel you have to get to the airplane here out of Fresno, and your time's getting very limited. Are there any other questions?
If I just a quick comment, you know, I, having listened to everyone, I wrote down a little thing here to make this simple. I like to understand things a simple way. So, you know, this is a tough, highly regulated business that we may or may not realize a savings in. According to your calculation, we will realize a savings according to yours, we may not. The only thing I heard raised today, there was a, Mr. Rubin said that our cost estimates for the new facility is low. Didn't quantify that, how low. It's the only thing I heard that made, that made me think, well, how low is it? How far off could it be? But it sounds like you've done your homework. And this city, what's the name of the?
Citigroup.
Citigroup. Do each of your organizations use Citigroup as well? That you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We do our own trading.
The competitors?
There are no competitors in the utility district, don't you understand that? There's also no profit.
It's actually of interesting note is that the trader with Citigroup is Alex Burnett, who this board said.
Yeah, well, I appreciate having heard both, you know, the different opinions there. You know, I don't think anything's been said today that would make me feel the way one board member did, that I need to throw up my hands with caution and say, wait, wait, wait. So I appreciate the input today, it's been very helpful.
I just want to say that, I mean, I realize we're not here to make a decision today, but as I appreciate everybody's coming and giving us information. You know, who's got a crystal ball? But when I look at these requirements about all these, that one little graph that showed all these various utility companies and how big a segment they have of coal, and the fact that they're going to have to move away from coal, tells me that we have a big issue in the future about additional capacity. Because if these people have been relying upon coal to provide power for their constituents, and they're not going to be able to do that into the future, they're going to have new power. So to me, one of the benefits I hear today is that, and we can talk about whether it's reliability or not, but just in the marketplace, a 500-megawatt power plant is a good thing. We're going to need more power in this state and in this region because of growth and because of changing dynamics. And that one of these dynamics is if we're moving away from coal, that's why I already think we're probably headed towards nuclear. It makes a whole lot of sense to me as a layman.
I believe we're sitting on power mounds of it in my district, sir.
That's true, you are.
It is.
The other, the other thing was that, so to me, the new power, I may just kind of expect some pluses and minuses, and I see new power as being a very positive thing. There's a potential for savings, there's a potential for, it won't be what we think it is. There's a local control issue as opposed to larger utilities. There's an air quality benefit. And I understand that seems counterintuitive, because you're saying, well, we're going to put pollutants into the air. But if you have to offset that with more than is being put into the air, you actually end up with the ability to create this power and actually have a net benefit to the air quality. And that's, again, seems counterintuitive, but that's, we deal with that all the time in the, in the San Joaquin, you know, Push and Air Control District, that that's how that all works. And then, we're not the deep pocket. I see that as a very positive. I mean, if we had to be as county, if we were being called to sign on the dotted line that we are the deep pocket also in this venture, that would be a big red flag to me as a county supervisor in terms of responsibility, but that's not there. So I, and the other thing is that we don't have to make the decision today, and that there's, this is still an ongoing process. So to me, I thought there's a lot of positives here, and I would, you know, I appreciate all the information, but I think moving forward with our potential participation in this would be, make a lot of good sense.
Thank you. Shelley, would you like to say a couple words?
Thank you, Supervisor. As a resident of the community, that this is being chosen for, something remiss from this whole discussion, although it's been very technical, and I'm not sold on the air quality. Placement is a big issue with this, and I'm speaking to you as a resident. The proposed area, which you don't have a map of where this is proposed, as community choice has been decided. It's directly in front of my house, like you would sit there.
Oh, well, nimbyism, automatically we have to discount this.
No, it is in a rural residential area. It's in a rural school. It's on county property that has not been. There are a lot of questions unanswered. So we make your decisions either to sign on or not, take this into consideration, drive on out and show you around. April 17th is your deadline. April 19th, KRDC is having an open house in Parler. Perhaps you may want to see the community before you make your decision. You come across us every day as Board of Supervisors, and I have a great empathy for you, because I've become one of those people that I sit at meetings and going, oh, God, I've become one of those people. I am the one greatly affected. I have met with KRDC a couple of times. They sent me a letter that if I choose to have more information, our community, they will supply it. We will be charged with slight fee for them finding it for us, but they will give us the information. My community, I just spoke to somebody, a neighbor today, that is still concerned. She heard something from another agency that we are not sold on what the emissions will be put out. If you were to have a new child, would you live across the street from what you're proposing to build?
Yes, I have a new child.
I'll trade houses with you.
I have a new child, yes.
There are these issues, the Indianola Elementary School, which is within a quarter-mile, the parents are not pleased with this. So my appeal is, drive out, have a look before you make a choice or a decision. And I, again, it does come down to money, and I realize that, of course, it comes down to money as well because it affects our land value. So with that being said, thank you. And thank you.
There are other interested parties in the audience that, if you would like to address this issue. Brian, would you want to say anything?
I didn't really, I'm prepared, but I did want to make one observation. I've been involved in the work to build a new biomass facility in the valley, which is a huge undertaking and difficult. And from what little bit I know of this, I think that the CCA program would make it easier for us to locate different types of biomass and methane conversions than going through the existing network of utilities, for what it's worth.
Sir, anyone else would like to speak?
I'll just thank everybody for their information, and I'll take it to constituents in my area and see what their thoughts are on this too. But appreciate everybody's information today, and thank you.
I also would like to thank everyone for attending today and the information we have received. And I know Mr. Orth's background at Weston's Water District in water and power, that's why they're in the same department usually, is that they're very complicated issues. We need to do due diligence as a board members to really study what you presented, and any additional facts would be greatly appreciated. So I'd like to thank you again for your presence, and we'll continue these talks.
Thank you.
Me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Brian?